All right, good evening, everyone. I call this October 14th, 2025 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge Allegiance led by Commissioner Barbara Baca.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. The staff is requesting suspension of the rules for Item 8A, Commissioners strengthening immigrant protections. The item's sponsors are requesting suspension of the rules for final adoption, consideration for Motion 1, approval of an administrative resolution affirming Burnaleo County's historic commitment to transparency, public safety, and the rights of all residents regardless of immigration status. Item 10F, Economic Development. The New Mexico Department of Transportation funding for both planning and preliminary design to support the I-40 Trade Port, South Broadway Hub, and Attrisco Vista Boulevard four-lane widening project be moved from introduction of resolutions to approval of resolution as Item 9A. Staff is requesting suspension of the rules for final adoption and introduction to allow ample time to spend the grant because it has a deadline. 10H, Real Estate. For fiscal year 26, acquisition of 3501 Fourth Street Northwest be moved from introduction of resolutions to approval of resolution as Item 9B. Staff is requesting suspension of the rules for final adoption and introduction to meet the deadlines of closing on the property. A vote is required for the requested suspension of the rules for the above items.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Commissioners, are there any changes from the dais this evening? All right, seeing none. Do we have any objection to moving all three of those rule suspensions with one motion? All right, seeing none. I'd make a motion to adopt the agenda with the three proposed suspension of the rules.
Second?
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
I'd like to just encourage my colleagues to consider just removing this rule. We're suspending the rules every meeting now because we need to get things done. And so I definitely support it tonight, but just no motion, no action tonight. I'd just like the commission to consider returning back to the old rules so where we can just approve things on the when we introduce them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the agenda with the rule suspension, signal in affirmative?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
That passes on a five-zero vote. We have an adopted agenda. Item 4 is our proclamations for the evening. We'll start off with National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, sponsored by Commissioner Walt Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Benavides, I see you coming up to the lectern. Mr. Benavides, Director Benavides is our Chief Information Officer. Thank you for being here. And I would like to read the proclamation. Whereas since 2004, the President of the United States and Congress have declared the month of October to be Cybersecurity Awareness Month, making 2025 the 22nd anniversary of Whereas cybersecurity affects us both in our personal lives and our workplaces, whereas cybersecurity is a mindset we should adopt whenever we use technology. And whereas ransomware attacks have surged by 126% globally in 2025 with organizations facing an average of 1,925 attacks per week, and 59% of organizations were hit by ransomware in the past year, with recovery costs averaging $4.44 million. And whereas phishing remains the leading cause of data breaches, now enhanced by AI-generated content and voice synthesis attacks. And whereas 81% of breaches still involve weak or reused passwords and multi-factor authentication remains one of the most effective defenses. And 81% of data breaches are the result of poor and reused passwords. And whereas global cybercrime costs are projected to reach $10.5 trillion annually by the end of this year, 2025. And whereas all Burnaleo County residents are encouraged to, one, recognize and report phishing, two, use strong passwords, three, turn on multi-factor authentication, and four, update software. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 2025 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, done this 14th day of October 2025 in Burnaleo County, State of New Mexico, signed all of the Board of Commissioners. And I just want to say, Mr. Benavides, and remind the crowd, it was only a couple of years ago when Burnaleo County was shut down entirely, three years ago, thank you, by ransomware, cyberattacks, criminals who are going through the computer system shut down. So our jails were in trouble. We couldn't get people released out of county jail or booked in the county jail. People couldn't get married. They couldn't pay their property taxes. It was a mess. And you were working double, triple time, sweating bullets, working with the FBI, Sandy Labs, and you cracked it. You cracked it. And you beat them at their own game, which was impressive, but not everybody has those resources or your talent. But thank you for being here, and please, we'd like to hear from you.
There we go. So thank you, Chair Levas, Vice Chair Baca, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak today, as we recognize National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. We do this every October, 22 years now, as Commissioner pointed out. One of the key points I want to make is in local government, cybersecurity isn't an IT issue. Cybersecurity is actually a public safety issue. You mentioned the jail as being a key issue there. Our residents depend on us to keep our data secure and keep our systems resilient, and so we work toward that every day. Cyber threats are increasing in both frequency and sophistication. AI is now powering these things quite a bit. Counties across the nation have seen ransomware attacks that shut down 911 systems, delay public services, and compromise sensitive information of our citizens. Burnaleo County, like many others, faces these same risks every day, from phishing emails and data breaches to attempted intrusions into critical infrastructure. Our IT security team is working tirelessly to strengthen our defenses. We've enhanced multi-factor authentication, improved our employee training, and improved our email security, since that's one of the common ones. But technology alone can't stop these cyberattacks, where people are first and best line of defense. Every employee who spots a suspicious email, reports a phishing attempt, or uses strong passwords is helping every one of us protect our county. We work closely with the state and federal partners, as well as our suppliers, to stay ahead of these emergent threats. Cybersecurity is our shared responsibility. We ask every department and every employee to stay alert, stay informed, and take the small steps they can do every day, like updating their passwords and recognizing scams. These things make a big difference. Residents can help us too by securing your home Wi-Fi networks, keeping your software up to date, and being cautious with emails and links, using strong passwords and multi-factor authentication where you can. As I close, let's commit to making cybersecurity a year-round priority. It needs to be something in our attention every day. Protecting our data means protecting our community, protecting our services, and the trust of those we serve. Thank you for your continued support in keeping Burnaleo County secure and resilient.
Thank you, Mr. Benavides. We have a plaque here for you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Jim Burden, please, please come to the podium here. This evening, we'll recognize VFW Post 10763 of Albuquerque for giving local students a voice through the Voice of Democracy program. They inspire young people to reflect on patriotism, share their ideas, and compete for scholarships, including a national scholarship for $35,000. On behalf of the commission, Mr. Burden, we have this proclamation I'd like to read. Thank you, just a minute. VFW Post 10763 of Albuquerque acknowledging that VFW Post 10763 of Albuquerque continues its longstanding commitment to promoting civic engagement and patriotism among local youth through participation in the 2025-2026 Voice of Democracy Audio Essay Competition, a national program giving high school students a platform to share their voices, ideas, and love of country. And acknowledging that the Voice of Democracy program, established in 1947, reaches more than 26,000 students annually nationwide, offering over $1.4 million in scholarships and inspiring generations of young Americans to explore what democracy means to them. And acknowledging that students in grades nine through 12 are invited to submit a short recorded essay on the theme, quote, "How are you showing patriotism in support of our country?", along with a typed copy and completed entry form to their local VFW post by October 31st, 2025, with scholarship opportunities available at the local, state, and national level, including a top national award of a $35,000 college scholarship. And acknowledging that VFW Post 10763 exemplifies the values of service, leadership, and community pride by keeping the scholarship tradition alive and encouraging young people to think deeply, speak confidently, and honor the ideals that unite our nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners conveys its sincere appreciation to VFW Post 10763 of Albuquerque for its continued dedication to supporting education, civic awareness, and patriotism among the youth of Burnaleo County, done this 14th day of October 2025 in Burnaleo County, State of New Mexico, signed by the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, and please, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you very much. What a great honor for our VFW posts. There's 38 VFW posts in the State of New Mexico that are all participating in this excellent project, this program. And we also have one for junior high school, or middle school students, as we call them here. Get your children to participate. We also have a teachers' award, and that's the hardest one for us to find. Finding a teacher that's not bashful is kind of a challenge, but we've been actually very good at doing that in the last few years. So I want to say thank you very much. Thank you for this honor, and we highly appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim. We have a certificate for you, and we'd like to take a picture with you. And I must say, I like your bowler tie.
Yeah, it's the same.
Jim just said they have some applications for the scholarship out in the hallway.
I did want to just take a moment and recognize the dignitary we have in the House. We have former State Senator Jerry Ortiz Pino, and just welcome to our chambers, and thank you for being here this evening. All right, so we're going to move on to public comment. Each person will have two minutes. You'll be alerted to your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you're speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. In order to maintain order and decorum, and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit, which, given the number of speakers we have this evening, we will strictly enforce the two-minute time limit. So I mean, no offense to anyone speaking, but we will be strictly enforcing that. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Javier, could you please call the names?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we have a total of 30 speakers, with nine speakers appearing via Zoom. Please line up at the podium when your name is called, and when it is your turn to speak, please state your name for the record. We will start with Don Schrader, followed by Father Vincent Chavez, followed by Tad Neminski.
Don Schrader. Millions of gay and bisexual men are not openly gay or bisexual to all who know them. They suffer constant fear that those who do not know will find out they are gay or bisexual and stop being their friends, even if they have been friends for many years. Many gay and bisexual men sadly drink booze to cope with the hell of living a double life. I refuse to live a lie. I would rather be rejected by some people for being openly gay than accepted pretending to be straight. I refuse to live in darkness, lies, and cover-up. I choose to live in the light of truth. Why invest my time and feelings in people who may suddenly drop me as their friend if they find out I am gay? Watch the new documentary, Lincoln, Lover of Men, on the Internet about Abraham Lincoln and his romantic relationships with four men. Why do many parents prefer their son be a soldier murdering people in war than for him to be in love and make love with men? I strongly support the rights of our undocumented immigrant sisters and brothers. Sadly, dictator Trump and his gang terrorize immigrants.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Father Vincent Chavez, followed by Tad Neminski, followed by Landeros Fabiola.
I am Father Vincent Chavez at St. Teresa's Catholic Parish in Albuquerque. Thank you, Commissioners, for this resolution and ordinance this evening. You are all about the rule of law towards our safety and dignity of all residents in Burnaleo County. I am an official observer at immigration hearings in El Paso. Trump's ICE officials are present outside the courtroom. As people come out of their official hearings, they are being arrested. It is a scene of screams and sobs. Trump is a creator of chaos among humanity. Trump is an antichrist in religious terms. I call out city councilors Pastor Dan Lewis, Champin, Groude, Basson, and mayoral candidates Darren White and Luis Sanchez, who wish to give ICE free reign of the city to summarily kidnap, arrest, and criminalize anyone they deem an immigrant, a refugee, or a citizen enemy from within. We say no to cruelty. We say no to ICE.
Tad Neminski, followed by Fabiola Landeros, followed by Rosalinda Dorado.
Excuse me. My name, Tad Neminski. After I immigrated, let me put it this way. It's two different, two types of immigration, legal and illegal. I came here legally after six months in Italy, in immigration camp. I got Italian passport. I surrendered my passport, Polish passport, when I went to the camp, to the camps. So anyway, I came here on the Italian passport. After so many years, I was struggle to get, in fact, I got, two, I don't remember, it's been almost 50 years. After three years or two years, I got my residence, permanent residence. Then I struggle. I went about three years ago, do you know, we have in City Hall immigration office. And I went up there, and what I got is also they have on the payroll. You make a migrant office. I was in there. They told me, no, you don't belong here. That's only for Mexican national or Latin American. So anyway, that's why we live in this city, this country, so liberal and disgusted with politics, dirty politics, dirty politician, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Fabiola Landeros, followed by Rosalinda Dorado, followed by Tere Hernandez.
Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Fabiola Landeros, and I'm with El Centro de Derechos, an immigrant rights and workers' justice organization with over 6,000 members. We are proud that over a decade, we have passed immigrant-friendly policies which recognize our community-based economic, civic, and cultural contributions. Trump has terrifying vision of mass deportation, one that is tearing families apart and spreading fear. For those of us who have experienced devastating family separation, this is personal, no political. And let us be clear, this is not just an immigrant issue. As our families struggle to put food on the table, the federal government is cutting billions from Medicaid while spending billions more on deportations. This will devastate working Mexicans. ICE violent tactics targeting the workers, taxpayers, and small business owners who form the backbone of our economy is bad economy. Mass deportation also cannot be realized without racial profiling. The targeting of Native Americans, native-born Hispanic, and other communities of color is inevitable. ICE agents in unmarked cars, masked, and refusing to identify themselves create a climate of fear that we will disappear without due process. Trump's reversal of sensitive locations memos is especially cruel. For years, leaders of both parties recognize that ICE enforcement at school, hospitals, and places of worship does harm. When people are afraid to seek help, report a crime, or show up for court, it hurts all of us. Public safety depends on trust, not fear. The introduction of these bankrupt policies step in the right direction. Common sense, measuring the ordinance to protect workers and businesses such as notifying workers during a 9-9 inspection and protecting vulnerable communities, including victims of violence, their house, and children's, makes sense. Our champions and those who can before, thank you for your time.
Rosalinda Dorado, followed by Tere Hernandez, followed by Mirna Lascano.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission. I'll be speaking for Rosalinda, but also for Claudia Bañuelos, who's also registered to speak, but I'll be seeing her testimony. My name is Claudia Buñuelos, and I'm speaking on behalf of the South Valley Economic Development Center and the Rio Grande Community Development Corporation in support of the Safe Community Place Resolution and Ordinance. For over 20 years, our organization has helped families and small businesses turn their ideas into thriving enterprises. We've seen firsthand in business-minded spirits and working hard immigrant families. I'm an immigrant myself, and I know firsthand the drive of people to build a better future here. Immigrants contribute to the communities in countless ways, as workers, business owners, and taxpayers. Mixed-status undocumented families pay federal, state, and local tax, often through the IRS ten system. According to the Institute of Taxation and Economic Policy, undocumented New Mexicans contribute with more than $153 million every year to state and local taxes and fund our schools, our roads, and public safety. Across the country, they are twice as likely as US-born residents to start a small business, and nearly half of Fortune 500 companies were funded by immigrants and/or their children. Here in the South Valley, many immigrant entrepreneurs have turned small food businesses into thriving businesses, employing our neighbors, paying taxes, and enriching our culture. Today, I want to thank the advocates, policymakers, and community members who continue to stand with immigrant families. Thank you.
Tere Hernandez, followed by Mirna Lascano, followed by Brandy Bridges.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission. My name is Teresa Hernandez, and I am a member of El Centro. Albuquerque has been my home for over 30 years. I came here to contribute to the economy of this state through a family business. I meet all the requirements to operate my business, pay my taxes on time, and strive to provide a safe and dignified space for my employees and customers. Today, I'm here to support the introduction of the Resolution and Ordinance because it is neither sensible nor fair to sick workers, taxpayers, consumers, and small business owners like us, who keep New Mexico's economy alive being attacked. Mass detentions and the constant presence of ICE have directly affected my business. Some employees do not come to work out of fear, and many customers avoid leaving their homes. When there are operations, business slows down and money stops circulating, also impacting other businesses, restaurants, and hotels in our community. Immigrants make up 16% of small business owners in New Mexico, and we contribute more than $1.9 billion in taxes each year. In addition, immigrant workers and business owners contribute $12 billion to state's economy. Seeing how fear and persecution affect our families and our economy is heartbreaking. That is why we support these two measures, as they will be very beneficial for my business and many others that have been affected by the extreme measures of this administration. With these protections, our workers and their families will feel safe and confident leaving their homes and working, continuing to contribute to our state's economy, and providing a safe and promising future for our families. Thank you.
Mirna Lascano, followed by Brandy Bridges, followed by Lucy Hernandez.
My name is Maria Leonascana. I'll be interpreting for my mother after she's done.
Buenas tardes, presidente y miembros de la comisión. Mi nombre es Mirna Lascano. Trabajo en cuidado infantil y soy miembro líder activa del centro. Me siento orgullosa de haber salido adelante, darle educación a mis hijas, y contribuir con mi trabajo a la economía de este estado, donde he vivido por más de 20 años luchando con el centro. Desde entonces, para defender las políticas amigables para inmigrantes en Albuquerque. Hoy estamos aquí para apoyar la introducción de la resolución y la ordenanza porque las deportaciones masivas de esta administración ha traído miedo, caos, y sufrimiento. No solo dañan a nuestra familia sino también a la seguridad pública. En Albuquerque, ICE persigue a la gente de nuestra comunidad, los vigila en sus casas, nos atacan los trabajos. O cuando vamos a comprar nuestros alimentos, imaginen el miedo que sentimos cada vez que salimos de casa pensando que podríamos ser separadas de nuestros... imaginen el miedo que sentimos cada vez que salimos de casa pensando que podríamos ser separadas de nuestros hijos y que nadie sepa dónde estamos. Esto va en contra de los valores de nuestra comunidad, por eso apoyo esta ordenanza con la que la gente tendríamos menos miedo de acudir a un hospital, escuela, iglesia, refugio o centro comunitario. Todos tenemos derecho acceso a servicios esenciales sin discriminación ni acoso. Yo apoyo este proyecto de ley por mí, por mi familia y por mi comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Mirna Lascano. I work in childcare and I'm an active leader in El Centro. I am proud to have persevered to provide my daughters with an education and to contribute through my work to the economy of this state, where I have lived for over twenty years, fighting alongside El Centro all this time to defend immigrant friendly policies in Albuquerque. Today, we are here to support the introduction of the Resolution and Ordinance because the mass deportations of this administration have brought fear, chaos and suffering. They are not only harmful, they not only harm our families but also our public safety. In Albuquerque, ICE pursues people in our community, watches them in their homes and attacks us at work or when we go grocery shopping. Imagine the fear we feel every time we leave our homes, thinking we could be separated from our children and that no one would know where we are. This goes against the values of our community. That is why I support this ordinance, which would make people feel less afraid to go to a hospital, school, church, shelter or community center. Everyone deserves access to essential services without discrimination or harassment. I support this bill for myself, for my family and for my community. Thank you very much.
Brandy Bridges, followed by Lucy Hernandez, followed by Nora Nevades.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Giara, a member of El Centro de Igualdad de Derechos. In solidarity, I will be reading our allies' testimony from Casa de Salud in support of the Bernario County Safer Community Places Resolution and Ordinance. My name is Dr. Brandy Bridges and I serve as the interim executive director at Casa de Salud, a community based healthcare organization serving Bernario County families. I'm here today to express our strong support for the purpose, for the proposed sanctions to protect the safety, dignity and constitutional rights of all of our residents regardless of immigration status. Our clinic serves patients every day who are afraid to seek care due to immigration fears. When families hesitate to access healthcare, report violence or enroll their children in school, our entire community's health and safety suffer. This ordinance ensures that trusted spaces like hospitals, schools, shelters, places of worship remain safe and welcoming so that no one has to choose between safety and survival. Casa de Salud stands with Bernario County's legacy of compassion, inclusion and constitutional integrity. We urge the passage of any protections for our community members. Thank you, Commissioners.
Lucy Hernandez, followed by Nora Nevades, followed by James Freeman.
Buenas tardes, Presidente y miembro de la Comisión. Mi nombre es Nora Niviana Vares.
My name is Tasa Luhan and I will be interpreting for her.
Soy una orgullosa madre, abuela y educadora de niños desde los seis meses hasta los doce años. También soy miembro del Centro de Igualdad de Derechos. Hoy estamos aquí para apoyar la introducción de resolución y ordenanza que representa un primer paso importante para seguir reafirmando los valores de nuestras comunidades. Trabajadores, el condado de Bernalillo y la ciudad de Albuquerque ha sido un ejemplo de cómo los líderes electos pueden reconocer la importancia de integrar y proteger a nuestras familias inmigrantes y de valorar la diversidad cívica, cultural y económica que nos enriquece a todos. Como maestra, me duele ver el miedo de los, de las caritas de nuestros niños cuando salimos a caminar y ver, y ven a una persona uniformada, algunas preguntas con temor. Dicen ellos, nos van a llevar o se van a llevar a mi mamá, a mi papá. Ningún niño debe vivir con ese miedo. Por eso hoy pedimos segu- seguridad para todas las personas que llamamos a este condado nuestro hogar. Queremos que nuestras escuelas sean lugares donde los niños se sientan protegidos y donde podamos seguir enseñándoles como, con amor y esperanza. Les pedimos que apoyen esta resolución para que nuestras familias puedan seguir viviendo sin miedo y nuestras comunidades sigan siendo un ejemplo de solidaridad, solidaridad y respeto. Muchas gracias por su tiempo y por escucharnos.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Nora Nevares. I am a proud mother, grandmother and educator of children from six months to twelve years old. I am also a member of El Centro de Igualdad de Derechos. We are here today to support the introduction of the Resolution and the Ordinance, which represent an important first step in reaffirming the values of our hardworking communities. Bernario County and the city of Albuquerque have set an example of how elected leaders can recognize the importance of integrating, integrating and protecting immigrant families and valuing the civic, cultural and economic diversity that enriches us all. As a teacher, it breaks my heart to see the fear in our children's faces when we go for a walk and they see someone in uniform. Some ask with fear, are they going to take us? Are they going to take my mom or dad? No, child should live with that kind of fear. That's why today we are asking for safety for everyone who calls this country our home. We want our schools to be places where children feel protected and where we can continue teaching them with love and hope. We ask you to support this resolution so that our families can continue living without fear and our communities can remain an example of solidarity and respect. Thank you very much for your time and for listening to us.
Lucy Hernandez, followed by James Freeman, followed by Joseph Padilla. Go ahead, Mr. Freeman. James Freeman, followed by Joseph Padilla, followed by Lena Weber.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. I am James Freeman and I live in County District Three. I'm here today to speak in favor of 11-8, the emergency funding request for Hope Village for, in FY26. I currently serve on the Board of Directors and the Executive Committee at Hope Works, but more importantly, I'm a former client. Nearly a decade ago, I found myself precariously housed and homeless here in Albuquerque. I found incredible love, kindness and compassion at St. Martin's Hope Works. I participated in many of the programs offered at Hope Works and I ate many meals in the day shelter. I often say that I'm not defined by my lived experience, but I'm certainly empowered by it. This agency helps thousands of people a year who are homeless or near homeless. Hope Village houses some of the most vulnerable folks. Providing this funding for operations at Hope Village allows, will allow the agency to continue supporting the most needy among us. The programs at this agency change, changes people's lives. They changed my life. They allowed me to attend college and earn a human services and social work degrees. I cannot say enough positive things about this agency. Thank you.
Joseph Padilla, followed by Lena Weber, followed by Sachi Watasi.
Good evening, esteemed Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Joe Padilla and I am a Director at Hope Works. One of the programs I oversee is Hope Village. And I'm here this evening because a crisis of chronic homelessness and behavioral health in Bernario County remains a most urgent challenge facing our community. Since its doors opened in 2022, your investment in Hope Village, New Mexico's first single site per minute supportive housing facility, has proven that there is a definitive solution. We are not just sheltering people, we are helping them transform and create stable and productive lives. I am here to request approval for emergency procurement and sustained operational funding to secure the future for Hope Village. As you may or may not know, Hope Village has forty-two single units, providing a forever home and twenty-four seven wraparound staff support to chronically homeless individuals, many with co-occurring mental health and substance use disorders. This is a permanent solution rooted in evidence. When a person is housed first, the cost burden in our entire community plummets. Our residents who were once the most frequent users of emergency services now have a path toward greater self-sufficiency. The funding we are requesting is not an expense, rather an investment that ensures the residents who have finally found stability do not return to the streets. The initial construction of Hope Village was a powerful collaboration between the city of Albuquerque, the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority and this very commission. Now we must focus on sustaining the daily work that makes the facility successful. Commissioners, Hope Village is successfully healing homelessness because of your prior visionary leadership. I ask you today for your continued commitment and investment and the daily hope and stability that Hope Village delivers. I respectfully request your favorable support for this funding measure. Thank you for your time and your commitment to a stronger, safer Bernario County. Thank you.
Lena Weber, followed by Sachi Watasi, followed by Heidi Schultz.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Lena Weber and I'm the Policy Director with the American Civil Liberties Union of New Mexico and I'm also speaking on behalf of my colleague Deanna Warren, Staff Attorney with the ACLU of New Mexico, who also registered to speak tonight. We're here today to speak in support of both the resolution and the ordinance. We are currently experiencing an unprecedented erosion of our constitutional rights and are witnessing the blatant disregard of due process on a near daily basis. It is, in the midst of this constitutional crisis, it is the role of our local and state governments to ensure that the fundamental constitutional rights of Bernario County community members are protected. This includes reinforcing the constitutional guarantee under the Tenth Amendment that the federal government cannot co-opt local or state resources for immigration enforcement, ensuring that subpoenas comport with legal standards and that due process is afforded to every person. Additionally, these measures complement the non-discrimination protections enshrined in state laws like the New Mexico Human Rights Act, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of national origin. The ordinance and resolution speak to the courage and resolve of the Commission to confront excessive immigration enforcement tactics with sound policy that keeps our community members safe and upholds the rule of law. We urge the Commission to pass both measures. Thank you.
Sachi Watasi, followed by Heidi Schultz, followed by Deanna Warren.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sachi Watase and I'm the Executive Director of the New Mexico Asian Family Center, a culturally specific victim service provider, supporting survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault across the state of New Mexico and primarily in Bernario County. I'm here today in strong support of the Resolution and Ordinance, expanding immigrant protections in Bernario County. These measures are not abstract policies, they're about people's lives, safety and dignity. Just two weeks ago, one of our clients, a survivor and a mother was detained by ICE immediately after a supposedly secure supervised custody handoff at a police station. She was taken into custody right outside the police station by ICE officers in unmarked vehicles and wearing masks. Her abuser then filed for full custody within hours. The survivor, who is eligible for protections like VAWA, should be able to rely on the systems that are meant to protect her and her child. However, without the kind of protections we are discussing today, some of the most vulnerable individuals in our communities are being torn away from their children and small culturally specific organizations like ours are scrambling to keep them safe every day. Please help us, Commissioners. This is not an isolated story. Abusers exploit fear and violence continues unchecked. The Resolution and Ordinance before you today affirm that no one should have to choose between safety and deportation. They ensure that places like shelters, counseling centers and family service agencies are treated as safe spaces where survivors can seek help without fear of ICE interference and that if federal agents do appear, they must have a valid judicial warrant. These protections are essential for public safety and for building trust in our community. I urge you to adopt both measures and stand with survivors, families and all who call Bernario County home. Thank you.
Heidi Schultz, followed by Deanna Warren, followed by Antoinette Sanchez Romero.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Heidi Schultz. I am the Chief Executive Officer of Hope Works. I'm here to advocate for your approval of funding for Hope Village. Joseph Padilla and James Freeman spoke before me and they spoke eloquently regarding the need for Hope Village and sustain it for our community. It is a one of a kind facility, the first one in the state of New Mexico and the only, and the only other one is in Santa Fe. It is truly one of a kind. It provides, again, wraparound services to our most vulnerable population experiencing long periods of homelessness, chronic addictions and severe mental health issues. I just wanna just give a little overview of what Hope Works is. We are celebrating our fortieth year of service, serving our most vulnerable citizens in our community of those who are experiencing homelessness and precariously housed, who suffer from substance abuse, mental health and other conditions that make them vulnerable in our community. We serve about fifteen thousand precariously housed and unhoused population in our community every year. We have a continual care of services from day shelter, outreach, behavioral health services to permanent supportive housing, scattered site and of course, Hope Village. And that's why we're speaking today for your support and funding Hope Village. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Deanna Warren, followed by Antoinette Sanchez Romero, followed by Sarah Escobar. We can call the next speaker, please. Antoinette Sanchez Romero, followed by Sarah Escobar, followed by Haley Burke.
Good evening, Chair, County Commissioners. My name is Antoinette Sanchez Romero. I go by Toni. And first and foremost, I want to support my esteemed colleagues Heidi Schultz, James Freeman, Joe. And I am here from Hope Works. I serve as the Chair of the Hope Works Governing Board. But I have much to add. We've been in this community now forty years and I've been in this community longer. I stand before you as the daughter of County Commissioner Juven G. Sanchez from the late seventies, early eighties. So, I've lived in this community and I truly understand the weight you carry. So I admire you for your tenacity, for your endurance and your, for your ability to provide to our community. And Hope Works is a big part of that. We provide to the most vulnerable populations and Hope Village is a part of that. We currently serve forty-two units within Hope Village, but our goal is much broader and bigger than that. Would like to get to sixty if we could and maybe more. But we can't do that without you, without your partnership. And this is what we're seeking in asking for the emergency funding. Now, Commissioner Benson, you, I'm done. So thank you for attending our barbecue and thank you Commissioners for all that you did.
Sarah Escobar, followed by Haley Burke, followed by Aurora Silva. If we could have the next speaker?
Good afternoon, Bernario County Commission and Chair. My name is Hallie Burke and I am the New Mexico Conservation Manager with the Wilderness Society. The Wilderness Society works to protect our nation's public lands and waters together with conservationists, recreationists and community advocates who understand that future generations depend on these places. The work is urgent here in New Mexico. Earlier this year, when Congress considered a proposal to sell off public lands, people across the country, especially those here in New Mexico, spoke up and stopped it. From hiking the San Diaz to biking around Viadore to exploring Petroglyph National Monument, New Mexico has twenty-six million acres of public lands where culture, community and conservation come together. These places carry our stories, our heritage and our sense of belonging. They are the inheritance we hold in trust for future generations. Public lands unite us, they remind us of what we share, not what divides us. The Wilderness Society urges the Commission to pass the resolution, the public lands resolution being introduced tonight and affirm Bernario County's support of public lands which benefit us all. Thank you so much.
Aurora Silva.
Good evening, everyone. I am Aurora Silva and I'm speaking as a teacher, a wife, churchgoer and a member of this community. I'm also a brown Latina woman, the kind of person that ICE would see locked up or I'm also a brown Latina woman, the kind of person that ICE would see locked up or kicked out of this country. This county prides itself on being a place of diversity. It is a place where all people are welcome. I believe the Commissioners Board should act on and approve the motion on establishing safe community spaces. People need to have access to our civil spaces to survive. They should be able to attend church, seek healthcare, visit shelters, food banks, and much more. All without worrying about being harassed just for her accent or the color of her skin. Children should be able to attend school and daycare without having to worry about losing their families. In addition, people should be able to exercise their rights without being subjected to the whims of overzealous ICE agents. Likewise, county resources should not be used to assist in the unjust enforcement of law. I believe we need to stand up for those who can't stand up for themselves and that we need to affirm those values of diversity. All eyes are on us, not just now, but of those of future generations too. People will remember how we acted now and forever. Thank you.
We will now move on to our speakers online. First speaker, Mary Ellen Garcia.
Good afternoon, good evening Commissioners. My name is Mary Ellen Garcia. I'm the Chief Executive Officer with the New Mexico Coalition Against Domestic Violence. I'd like to thank the Commission and the County of Bernalillo and the City of Albuquerque for its continued commitment to safety and community well-being. I'm here today to speak about why creating immigrant-friendly and safe spaces for survivors of intimate partner violence and sexual violence is not just a moral responsibility, it's truly a matter of public safety and community trust. When we say every survivor deserves safety, that promise must include our immigrant and most vulnerable populations, people who are working and raising families and contributing to our communities. Safety and justice cannot just depend on being a citizen or language. Trust, true safety means that everyone can reach out for help without fear, without worrying that a call for help might lead to deportation, family separation, and discrimination. We're hearing from survivors and advocates who are being terrorized, and I do not use that word lightly. Sachi Watase briefly spoke about a survivor that they are working with. I sat with the advocate who was involved in that situation, who was also detained during that time, and the terror and the trauma that that has placed upon our advocate community and the survivors that they serve. Our courts, our systems, our shelters need to be places of protection and not retraumatization. I ask that you, as a Commission, look at that our immigrant neighbors are a vital part of our communities and that supporting immigrant-friendly policies creates safety within our communities. Safety is not safety when it only applies to some of us. Every survivor, regardless of where they are born, deserves the chance to live free from violence. And we must reiterate that community safety and human dignity are imperative to the work that we do. We can't end violence in our homes if the very systems that are meant to protect us are causing us harm. Thank you for your time.
Merritt Tully.
Chair Olivas, Commissioners, good evening. I'm Merritt Tully, the current President of Near North Valley Neighborhood Association and a longtime North Valley Advocate. I'm here to urge you to vote in favor of 9B, the $1.5 million in funding and authorization to acquire the property at 3501 Fourth Street Northwest. This property is in our neighborhood. Your yes vote tonight will provide the final chunk of funds necessary to purchase property for a centrally-located North Valley Community Center serving all ages. This will be another huge step in completing the county's 2015 commitment to fund, construct, and operate a community center in our area. There is widespread support for a community center and for this location. We recently did a DOT exercise with Garfield STEM School students and their families about what kind of activities they would like at the center, and the excitement was palpable. We know there's a lot of community engagement work ahead on design, programming, and securing funding for operations and maintenance. The group of neighborhood representatives from throughout the North Valley assembled to work with Commissioner Baca at the start of this project is ready to go. Again, please vote yes to allocate funding and authorize acquisition of 3501 Fourth Street Northwest. Thank you.
Janet Sayers.
All right. Well, good evening, and I would gladly show my face if I could figure out how to do that too. Thank you, Chair Olivas, members of the Commission, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Library Advisory Board to tell you about two things that are happening. With the first being that next year, 2026, as we celebrate the 100th anniversary of Route 66, we have 11 speakers at 11 different locations who'll be giving free programs on the fourth Saturday of every month. And I'm glad to say that of that, five of those are libraries, including the Patrick Baca Central Unser Library Branch, the East Mountains, the South Valley Branch, Special Collections, and also the International District, along with the Raymond Sanchez Community Center and the Historic Hubble House in the South Valley. So I hope you all can participate. And then giving a report on the goal of the Library Advisory Board to contact every member of the Bernalillo County delegation and our state legislature, we have gotten commitments from seven of the 32. Everyone we've spoken to has responded positively. And I just heard today from Representative Serenjana that she will be identifying part of her Capitol Outlay. So I would just urge every member of the Commission to follow the lead of Commissioner Barbara Baca in providing funds from out of your district-directed funds that could help us reach this goal of over $2 million to repair and replace the HVAC system at the downtown library, which has multiple functions. And I'm not seeing the clocks. I'm not sure if I'm going over or what, so.
Your time is up, Ms. Sayers. Well timed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Joseph Sabatini.
Mr. Sabatini, if you can unmute yourself, please.
I apologize, Chair Olivas Commissioners. My name is Joe Sabatini. I've lived in the Near North Valley since 1968 and have been active in the community and the Neighborhood Association. I want to second the support that Merritt Tully has expressed for funding the Life Center at 3501 Fourth Street. Over time, we've had venues that we were able to use that are, you know, the hours got reduced and we weren't able to. So recently, I attended the city's community assessment for the North Valley and had Los Duranas Community Center and said, gee, I wish we had had one of those closer to us. Los Duranas is two and a half miles from where I live and where the site is. And then the McKinley Community Center is the same two and a half miles. It's more modest in what it provides. So this would be, set off a really wonderful neighborhood, community area with the Health Clinic, St. Therese Church, and the Cayacorta Apartments and End Loft and Make-work, Live Work Spaces and Town Homes that have just been completed. That would be a vibrant community center that will enhance the redevelopment of Fourth Street. Thank you for your attention.
Tiffany Cunningham.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you Commissioners for your service to our community. I'm Tiffany Cunningham. I work with Organized Power and Numbers. We are a workers advocacy and rights group. We work for the uplifting of all working people. I want to speak frankly. We feel that our constitution is under attack. Our democracy seems to be hanging by a horse feather and a prayer. And we implore you, we beg you, as the first line of defense, to support our community and to continue to uphold our guaranteed constitutional rights. To please pass this resolution. Nobody feels safe when we have masked agents riding around in unmarked cars that are not showing warrants and are not giving people due process. This feels like we're being terrorized. Our community is under attack. And we are not asking for anything radical or unheard of. We're asking for you to please uphold our constitutional rights, all of us. Our workers are the lifeblood of our economy. We keep the community running. We need all of us. We need all of us at work every day. And we implore you to please protect our workers, please protect our people in our community, protect our children. It is unreal to think that our schools, our daycares, our churches, our grocery stores, our places of community fellowship can be under attack in this way when it is a complete and clear violation of our constitutional rights. You are our first line of defense and we ask you to please continue to serve us, your community, by following our constitutional rights. We're not asking for much. And as an advocate for workers--
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have a few speakers that signed up online, but they are in person. If I can go ahead and call them. Andrea Plaza, followed by Rachel Sonia, followed by Heather Norfleet.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Andrea Plaza and I'm the founding Executive Director of Encuentro, a 16-year-old adult education and workforce development training center located in the heart of Baredelas, where we focus on supporting the educational and career needs of adult Spanish-speaking Latinx immigrants. Every year, Encuentro enrolls 300 immigrant adult students into various programs. Encuentro students are business owners, workers, and parents, and they are committed to building the educational skills they need to gain better-paying jobs, support their children's educational success, and become engaged and contributing residents of our community. Encuentro is a gathering place for our students, where adults come together to build workforce skills, including hands-on training for home health aides to care for the growing population of seniors in Bernalillo County. However, this summer, less than six months into a new federal administration, 100% of our classes decided to go online in response to the expressed fears of our community and staff related to our building becoming a target for an immigration raid. Thankfully, Encuentro is quite effective at giving online classes due to the unexpected shift required from us and many other organizations during COVID. But online options for training future caregivers is less than ideal. And today, what's happening right now with this new administration feels like an equally dangerous virus. Our immigrant communities and all of us gathered here today are terrified by what's going on. Encuentro wants and needs our students to feel safe in our location. We have no time to waste when supporting workers and business owners to make our economy the strongest it can be. Tonight's decision by the County Commission can help Encuentro students and Bernalillo County residents feel more protected, safe, and free to go about their lives without the fear of being torn from their families. Thank you.
Rachel Sonia, followed by Heather Norfleet, followed by Javier Rojo.
Hi, thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rachel Sonia and I'm here to give my support to this motion to strengthen immigrant protections. I am a teacher here in Albuquerque Public Schools and I teach English language development. So I teach English to students who are learning English and I specifically work with recently arrived English learners. So I work exclusively with newcomers here in Albuquerque. I often say I have the best job in the world because of the linguistic and cultural diversity in my classroom. It is truly a beautiful experience to get to work with folks from all over the world and have them come together and create a really beautiful community at our school. As a teacher, I think a lot about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? And we know that before someone can learn, they have to have their physiological needs met. They have to feel safe and they have to have a sense of belonging. And right now, we are not doing that. We're seeing the opposite of that happening in our schools. Our students do not feel safe. And as an educator, I am constantly asking myself, how can my students learn in this context? I mean, how can they have their physiological needs met when we're seeing cuts at every single level? How can they come to school and learn when the fear of ICE is ever looming? They are scared to come to school. We are seeing our enrollment drop. We're seeing students move to e-Academy because they are too scared to come to our school sites. In this political climate in which racism has not just become normalized, but codified, we have a moral imperative to, at any level that we possibly can, protect the children of Albuquerque. So I ask that you please help to ensure their most fundamental rights. Thank you. Bye.
Javier Rojo, followed by Aurora Ariola.
Good afternoon Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Javier Rojo and I'm here on behalf of the Real Grand Community Development Corporation and the South Valley Economic Development Center. I'm here today to give public comment and strong support of this resolution and ordinance. For over 20 years, our organization has been supporting small businesses and helping their families turn their ideas into thriving enterprises. In those two decades, we have seen firsthand the entrepreneurial spirit of immigrants and the tremendous contributions they make to our local economy. And I speak from experience. I am the proud son of immigrants and I know the determination, sacrifice, and hope that drive so many families to build a better life here. Too often, we hear myths about immigrants taking more than they give. The truth is the opposite. Undocumented mixed-status families contribute to over $150 million each year in state and local taxes. Those dollars help fund our schools, roads, and healthcare systems, the essential services that keep our community strong. And immigrants just don't contribute as workers. They also create jobs. Across the country, immigrants are twice as likely as US-born residents to start a business. And nearly 40% of the Fortune 500 companies were founded by immigrants or their children. Here in the South Valley, we've seen countless entrepreneurs, many of them immigrants, turn small food ideas into thriving businesses that hire locally and enrich our culture. In New Mexico, immigrants make up 9% of the population, but 12% of our workforce and contribute more than $11 billion to our state economy each year. They are keeping our labor force strong. As our population ages and family size shrink, without their energy, innovation, our economy would be less vibrant and our communities less resilient. So when we talk about protecting workers, we're also talking about protecting businesses. You can't have one without the other. The provisions in this ordinance are common sense, business-friendly. They are bringing clarity and fairness and ensuring that employers understand their rights and responsibilities while creating safe, stable environments for their workers. Thank you very much for your time.
Aurora Ariola.
Good evening Chairman and Members of the Committee. My name is Aurora Ariola. I am the Policy and Economic Justice Manager at New Mexico Immigrant Law Center. And I stand here today in support of the safer community, places, ordinance, and resolutions. I stand here today not only as a member of our immigrant community, but as someone who calls New Mexico home. Immigrants are at the heart of New Mexico's economy. Immigrants are not only workers who build our homes and care for our families, they're also entrepreneurs, educators-- They're also entrepreneurs, educators, healthcare professionals, and innovators who move our state forward. As you have just heard recently, immigrant communities power nearly 12% of New Mexico's workforce and contribute to every major sector, from construction to agriculture to education, technology, and the arts. Our creativity, leadership, and resilience keep our local economies growing and our community thriving. 16% of small business owners in New Mexico are immigrants. Together, immigrant workers and entrepreneurs generate nearly $12 billion in economic output each year. But these numbers are not just statistics. They represent neighbors, parents, and entrepreneurs who strengthen our community every single day, just as you can see here today in the audience. When fear spreads and families feel unsafe to go to work, take their children to school, or seek medical care, our local economy suffers. Fear drains spending, disrupts small businesses, and undermines public safety for everyone. From 2020 to 2023, according to the census, Hispanic and Latino communities have been among the fastest-growing population here in our state, in New Mexico. This growth goes beyond demographics. It is cultural, economic, and deeply humane. Our diversity is our strength, and the future of New Mexico is inseparable from the well-being and safety of the immigrant community. But our worth should not be measured in numbers or statistics alone. We are human beings. We are neighbors, parents, and friends who share the same hopes: to raise our children safely, to care for our loved ones, and to live without fear. When families are afraid to go to work, to seek medical care, or to simply exist in public, it doesn't just hurt us. It erodes the moral and social fabric of our entire community.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Sorry to cut you off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes our public comment.
All right. I want to say a very special thank you to all of our public commentators on the many topics, and thank you for educating us a little bit on your perspective and what's going on in your lives and livelihoods. So up next, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for Items 6B and 6C?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 6B is FR 2025-99, and 6C is AR 2025-100.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So the Consent Agenda has been published and made available to the public, and resolutions have been introduced at previous meetings. Therefore, I move to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. We have no withdrawals from the Consent Agenda this evening, so that takes us on to Item 8A. Madam Clerk, could you please issue a resolution number? Your mic.
Mr. Chair, I believe that Item 8A was moved to Item 9A? Right?
Oh, my apologies there. I think it's--
Is that correct, Julie?
Yeah, it's because it's under--
Madam Clerk, so that may have been an earlier version of the script, so we are keeping it as 8A. The ordinance supersedes the resolution, so that's why it is scheduled where it's at.
Okay. Then Item 8A is AR 2025-101.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So first off, we have strengthening immigrant protections, and we have the sponsors, Vice Chair Barbola and Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have heard some heartfelt comments today, and I will continue with that. This is really-- we have some posters up here that talk about the legacy and the leadership of Bernaleo County, and I believe that is what we are talking about tonight. I am proud that my father, Patrick Baca, when he was a commissioner in 1991, sponsored the first resolution talking about immigrant-friendly community and immigrant policies. And in the words of my father, las palabras de mi padre, it called upon the United States Congress to immediately honor its commitment and its responsibility to provide adequate federal funding to meet the human needs of immigrants. So today, this resolution builds on that, and it is about the longstanding commitment to protecting safety, dignity, and rights of all its residents, regardless of immigration status. Sadly, as we have all seen and read, those rights are being violated daily by an overzealous federal administration targeting immigrant communities. They propagate misinformation and fear about the millions of immigrants that have helped make our county and our country stronger. So what do we know is true about immigrants? We know our immigrant community has made irreplaceable contributions to our counties and our nation's economic, social, and cultural well-being. We know immigrants, regardless of their legal status, contribute to federal, state, and local taxes through income, sales, and property taxes. We know undocumented immigrants pay billions into Social Security, even though many will never receive these benefits. We know that most studies show that immigrants often take jobs that are hard to fill, especially in agriculture, construction, healthcare, and the service industries. And despite all the fearmongering about our immigrant neighbors, we know from numerous studies that immigrants are less likely to commit crimes than native-born citizens. What's happening under the Trump administration's mass deportation actions threatens all of our rights. Under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of our Constitution, all of us, including undocumented immigrants, are entitled to the due process of law. The Fourth Amendment to the Constitution guarantees protection for all of us from unreasonable searches and seizures. That's being violated almost every day by federal immigration officials. Immigration raids and arrests must follow the same constitutional standards as all other law enforcement actions, including warrants or probable cause. That is not happening in many cases across our country. The US Constitution provides verhavius corpus, which guarantees the right to challenge detention in the courts for all of us, including immigrants. We can't just be snatched up by unidentified authorities as we go to work or as we go to school. This resolution and ordinance that we are discussing tonight send a strong signal to immigration officials that we are one community, and we will stand together to protect all of our constitutional rights. In my father's words, he always told me, "To work for the city and the county is a privilege and a trust." And I feel privileged to represent all residents of Bernaleo County. And you can trust that Bernaleo County will protect the safety and welfare of all our residents. So I urge the support of my colleagues for this resolution tonight, and I'd like to pass it on to my colleague, Vice Chair Barbola, to continue.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Barbara Baca. So important. I'm very honored to have a living somebody we can touch and see to really hold on to that hope and dream of our legacy as Bernaleo County. I want to start by saying bienvenidos a su edificio del condado de Bernaleo. Somos un lugar seguro para que las personas acceden a los servicios del condado sin importar su estado migratorio. And to everyone, welcome to your Bernaleo County building. We are a safe place for people to access county services, regardless of your immigration status. Thank you for all of the various voices we heard from today. Today, we're reminded of our past and Bernaleo County's legacy, right here with Commissioner Baca representing her-- you know, repeating what her father did. To me, this is so important as a multi-generational New Mexican, right? To say that this is and has always been us. We belong here, and we will defend each other. And it's not just in the 1991 or the 2010, 2017, 2019, now 2025 policies that we pass. It's in the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo. It's in everything that this county, the people that have chosen to live here, touched, do, and have lived on for our legacy. This is us. We are here. We have been here. We have created the policies and governments here, and we will continue to defend each other. History has shown us too many times that attacks on immigrants are just a tactic of white supremacy and more about power and control than they are about crime and safety. Crime does not have a color. Crime-- if anything, this is our government's inefficiency to be able to address crime and put the blame on the shoulders of those folks that are working so hard or doing things with their family that they don't have time to pay attention to these government bureaucracy. As elected officials, I'm proud to sit here today with this deep-rooted legacy of those before us and to say that, you know, Bernaleo County does have the authority, but more importantly, we have the responsibility to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote prosperity, and improve the morals, order, comfort, and convenience of its inhabitants. That's written in our Constitution. So I won't belabor this anymore. We heard the beautiful stories, representation of who we're fighting for today. And I just ask my colleagues to consider both this resolution and ordinance to pass to make our communities safer and ensure our inhabitants that we care, we are here, and we will defend each other. I ask for open any questions.
Would either of you like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. First motion, I move approval of the resolution this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Open up the floor for discussion or comments, Commissioners. Commissioner Frank Baca, did you?
Thank you. No, I support this motion. And I just want to reiterate a point that I've made many times in public and private meetings, and that is that-- but there are, I guess, sort of two levels here. One is the level of, is this the right, humane, moral thing to do? And there's another level. As I've learned from many, many years living on this earth, what is right and the right thing to do is sometimes very subjective, right? What we think is not always what everybody else thinks. So we all have our opinions on that, and that's good. The other level is what I'm looking at, and what I think about is more how to convince people. How do you make people understand? Or how do you explain to people your position so that it's something that they will hear, listen, and perhaps change their mind? And to me, that approach involves presenting facts, data, information, reason, rational argument. And that, I think, is the leg that I especially like to stand on here because I think the other argument has been well-stated by many speakers. I tend to kind of find little tidbits of information from different sources that I like to keep tabs on. And one of them is a newspaper article that was in the Albuquerque Journal Business Outlook on October 5, 2025, and it talked about housing. Well, that's a subject I'm also very interested in because it sort of addressed the issue as to whether or not housing is in fact at a crisis level in New Mexico. And it's kind of interesting because it indicates that it's not really-- in fact, it's coming back into balance, and that's another conversation for another day. But the truth, according to the statistics in this article, which is sourced as the Local Realtors Association, is that Albuquerque is not growing. Our population not only is flat, it is declining. The only reason and way that it's growing is through the immigrant community. That's it. 30,000 immigrants-- and I can't remember what period of time-- have entered the community, and that is how-- the only reason this community is growing. I'm not an economist, but I would think that if you want your economy to grow, it's helpful to have more people in your community. Another very similar source that I picked up just recently was at a nice, very luncheon by the Middle Real Grand Council of Government. They have a nice annual report, the 2025 Annual Report, and it made the same point. It talks about growth in this area, in this mid-real grand area. Having been over 5% in the '50s and '60s, it dropped to 2% by 1990. And as of 2020, it was only a third of a percent. That's information here. That's data. Nice glossy pamphlet. If we want our economy to grow, we need people. We need growth. Earlier this year, our governor announced an initiative to have universal, essentially free childcare. Sounds great. Only issue is we need 5,000 childcare providers. Where do we get those people from? Where do we find people that are childcare providers? I know there's a program that's in the House that provides training for home healthcare. We're also talking about-- home healthcare, I've been told, is the fastest-growing occupation in the state. Now add in childcare providers. So my last source-- and I'm not a historian, although I didn't-- I should say I'm not an economist. I actually have a degree in history. And I mentioned this book from the dais once before. It was at another luncheon that I attended. Very interesting luncheon. And the title of the book, the whole title is, Why Successful Societies Welcome Newcomers: The Truth About Immigration by Dr. Zeke Hernandez. And himself an immigrant, a brilliant economist-- he is an economist. He is at the Wharton School, University of Pennsylvania, a very prestigious institution. And he makes the case for why immigration-- I don't know that he once in this book said it's the right thing to do. He said it's the smart thing to do. And he says something that I've never heard anybody else say about immigration. And what he says is not just that we need consumers. It's not just that we need workers, but he talks about the business investment in a way that I've never thought of, which is that businesses from outside this country invest in this country, and they go to the markets where there's immigrants, similar immigrants. Those businesses thrive. The money then goes back to that company in another country. And guess what they do with that money? They invest it into the United States. Think about that. Institutional investors because of an immigrant community in this country. So my reasons for support-- again, it's, I think, me personally, the right thing to do, but I also look at our economy. And as an attorney, which I am, I do have some serious concerns about due process. I have some serious concerns of how people are treated. And that's a whole nother discussion. But again, it goes back to my theory of-- not only is it the right thing to do, but is the legal constitutional thing to do. And one last statement I want to make-- and this is primarily for perhaps friends of mine that may be watching who are also attorneys-- my first part of my career, to a great extent, I worked in private practice and did some criminal defense. So the end of my career, I worked for a short period of time-- four years, actually-- as a prosecutor for various reasons having to do with retirement and para. Most rewarding job in my career, as I've told people, because I learned something that many of my friends, who are criminal defense attorneys, don't always know or appreciate or think about. And I learned this from my very-- And I learned this from a very group, a group of very young lawyers in my office then, sitting around talking. They were intelligent, bright, young, active, we were lawyers, and we're talking about our cases, and one of them reminded me or, or instructed me that our job is to do justice. Not to secure convictions, but to do justice. That is what this country is about, to do justice. And that has affected my, my thought about this and many other issues, is that we are here to do the right thing. We're do, here to do the smart thing, but we're also here to do justice. And that's why I'm supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I welcome all immigrants. My stepmom, uh, immigrated from Africa. My dad married her after eighteen years. She became a citizen. Um, so I encourage all of it. I just encourage you to do it legally, and that's the only difference. We do need immigrants. We are flat, according to the last census. In fact, out of the five districts in Burnley County, four of them shrank in the last ten years. Only one of them grew. That was mine. Because population is leaving. We need growth, but, and we need immigrants to help us grow. But we also need businesses to help us grow. We need to stop being last in everything. And we've become a sanctuary for everything bad. Child abuse, child deaths, poor education, murder rates, crime. We've got the deadliest street in the nation for pedestrians, Onkor's Boulevard. And, and we, we've got to enforce the law. And I beg you, all of you listening, just obey the law, whatever it is. Speeding, I get pushed back all the time about speeding cameras. If you obey the law, you won't get a speeding ticket. So that's my, that's my only comment, is, uh, welcome all immigrants. Thank you. Kindly come to our country. Kindly contribute. Raise families, contribute to the economy, but do so legally and obey the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'm gonna to add my own thoughts here to this. I think we've had so many eloquent speakers on this dais and, and even more so in, in our crowd. Um, the, the teacher, ma'am, your, your story about the, the kids that you work with is, is heartbreaking. Um, childcare workers and, uh, you know, moms and their children, um, just an incredible group here that, that really express the moral imperative that we face here, to do the right thing for, for members of our community, that just deserve the dignity and respect, and frankly, the justice that our constitution guarantees. But the dignity and respect that our community values, the, the place that we're from, the, the reason why I'm proud, uh, to say that I'm from New Mexico, the reason why when I go to other states, the only thing I wear is shirts that say I'm from New Mexico, because I'm proud of it here. I'm proud of our culture, I'm proud of our people. Uh, and I know this commission's gonna do the right thing tonight and, and do the right thing by our people. So I want to take just a, a short detour here to talk about why we are where we are. Because I think we all understand the situation, uh, but at a higher level. The, the bottom line is that this, uh, errant administration, this administration has no respect for the law, no respect for the constitution that we all swear an oath to, as does the president and vice president and every member of Congress. This administration was narrowly elected, but elected nonetheless by a majority of this country. We can't dispute that. But the reason this individual, somebody who I, I believe is, you know, manic, I'm, I'm not a doctor, I have no rea-, no ability to diagnose the issues here, uh, but this is a deranged individual. Uh, and the fact that our country elected this person, this administration, is the more important issue. And the bottom line is that in this room, we all have more in common with each other, regardless of your immigration status, your national origin, your skin color, black, white, brown, than we have in common with the one hundred richest people in this country, the oligarchs and billionaires that run this world. That's the reason why we're divided right now. That's the reason why people are at each other's throats, because we have been distracted. The billionaires, the oligarchs of this world, understand that there are way more of us than there are of them. And the only way that they win is to keep us divided, to keep us distracted, keep us on our phones, and keep us pointing fingers at each other because you're brown, because you're illegal, creating division, manufactured crisis. And I'm not saying that this is not a crisis for, for everyone, but these divisions are being manufactured by people who are profiting off of this. And I just, that is what I can't get away from, is that we have to take our country back, we have to take our world back. These problems that Commissioner Benson mentioned, hundred percent, I, I agree with those. Those are huge problems. Education in our state, crime in our state. You know why those are problems? Because we have billionaires and multinational corporations extracting wealth from our state, from our communities, not paying their fair share, and who's stuck with the bag? Us, our immigrant community, the people paying their taxes on their wage labor, not the people paying taxes, or rather, not paying taxes, on their investment income, on their stock portfolios. So I just want to center this conversation on the fact that the way bigger issue here that's way beyond our ability, but I do truly believe it's within our collective ability as a community, as a nation, as a world, to tackle the fact that we live in the most wealthy and successful country in the history of the planet, and we have people hungry and sleeping on the streets. It's unacceptable, it's unconscionable, and we can fix it by asking very few individuals to contribute a lot more. All these problems go away. And that's what I hope we realize today. And of course, I'm gonna support this because it's the right thing to do, it's the least that we can do here at, at our county commission, and I just, I want to thank my colleagues, the vice chair and, uh, Commissioner Baca for their leadership and the incredible leadership of our, of our team here at the county, and most importantly, you in the audience who, in some cases, may have risked your, your very life, your very well-being to be here. I, I just, I have incredible gratitude for, for you all and for this, and, uh, and thank you. Open up the floor if there's any further comments. Sponsors to close.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Vasit. Um, honor to serve with you. Um, yeah, I, I, just to close this out, you know, right now, our state legislature met in a special session, um, to figure out ways to supplement the upcoming healthcare crisis, um, with the budget cuts that we've seen in the big bill. Um, and while that is going on, the federal government is cutting hundreds of billions of dollars from our healthcare while leaving millions without healthcare, we're also investing billions to terrorize our communities. And I just want to be clear that that mass deportation requires racial profiling. There's just not another way to do it. If you're gonna say the words mass deporte- deportation, it means that you are going to be racially profiling. So, um, again, thank you for everybody's hard work tonight. This is us. I'm so proud and thankful to hear from so many business owners, educators, survivors, work for, our workforce, childcare providers, so many ethnicities, um, various faith leaders. We received more public comment by, um, emails as well, um, and to all our community organizers and leaders in this community, thank you so much. We stand on your shoulders. Um, and yeah, for that, I'd just like to close and ask that you, our, um, my colleagues, approve our resolution this evening.
Commissioner Baca?
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, I urge your support for this because I do feel that we've heard tonight that, uh, immigrants do make Burnley County stronger. So I urge your support, and we will be stronger because of it. Thank you.
I so move.
All right, we'll close the floor. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of adoption of the resolution, uh, signal the affirmative. Yes? Any opposed?
No.
It passes on a four-one vote. And, uh, Julia Ann, do we need to take a separate action on the ordinance?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Sponsors?
Thank you. I'll just introduce the ordinance to say that, um, this ordinance, if passed tonight, um, will go, will have a thirty-day, um, period as, um, instructed by our state statute and our government, uh, our county charter, um, which is important when we're passing ordinances because they are real law. Um, so they, uh, so when we pass them, we have to have that thirty-day period so people can provide comment, um, including you all. Please check out the ordinance. If there's something we should do to make changes or improve it, we are open to hear that from you. Um, and, um, if it passes in its final pass, our county manager and our county staff will be receiving trainings, um, getting placed up, we'll have, we'll commit signage, and we want community involved throughout. But today's introduction, um, and, um, we'll go for a final vote on November eighteenth, Burnley County, um, asking for a motion to approve our, the ordinance, um, for
Introduction.
Introduction to a Safer Community Places in Burnley County.
There's a motion, there's a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca, and, uh, we'll open up the floor on introduction of the ordinance. Any more from the sponsors?
Um, I think we've said it, um, all tonight, um, that, like I said, the, the ordinance has specificities about, um, guaranteeing the public spaces, places, um, and the places that can, that we can have some, we can, so the ordinance, um, reinforces that law enforcement or immigration officers cannot enter private spaces and that provide vital resources, including places where our kiddos unhoused and survivors of domestic violence and all of our community needs without a valid judicial warrant or probable cause. So I introduce the ordinance and ask for your vote in favor.
All right, commissioners, the floor is open. Any, uh, further comments or questions on the ordinance? Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, I'm just noting this, thinking about other law enforcement that we, we do encourage. Um, the FDIC goes into your banks, make sure they, they're obeying the law, and if they're not, they go to jail. Um, in the paper every Sunday, I own a restaurant, I'm reading down the list who the public, uh, Department of Health has shut down because the water temperature isn't correct. And that's shutting down businesses, stopping income, stopping the support of families, and the business has to step up and make sure that they're sharp. So we're, we're choosing the laws that we want to, uh, ignore and not support, the federal laws, and it's want to make it clear, we're, we're choosing which laws we're gonna support. And I think most of us would agree that this country needs laws for the, for the safety of everybody. And that my un-, my uncle went to prison and destroyed his family, but he deserved it. He broke the law. He was embezzling money, went to federal prison for five years, then he came out for two years and had a heart attack and died. And it topped the whole family. You don't embezzle money. So I just want to make it clear, we're, we're choosing the laws we're ignoring, and, and the state of our state is a choice. Now, this is a choice, each of us have a choice to vote. All the, all the negatives about our state, the reason why we're flat, why every state around us has grown rapidly over the ten years, except for our state, which is flat, that's a political choice. It is a choice by all elected leaders in our state. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just, uh, I wanted to say in, in response to that, that, um, we're not choosing to, uh, selectively enforce laws here. In fact, we're encouraging our federal partners to, uh, enforce the constitution, which requires due process, which respects that there are certain spaces and places, uh, where a particular standard must be met for, uh, enforcement actions, things like a warrant. Uh, so I, I think that this is a, a very reasonable request by our colleagues and by our community to ask our federal partners, and, and this applies to local partners too, um, to honor their obligation, the most basic law, the first law in our country, which is the constitution. And so I think that, that this is actually very grounded in law and, and legal doctrine. So, anyway. Commissioner Baca?
Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, I, I just passed out, just for informational purposes, to each of my colleagues up here, um, and this is a messi-, a message from our Attorney General, Raul Torres. It's guidance on immigration enforcement. This is online, so anybody can access this. Um, but this is a statement from our, um, AG. Our priority is to protect New Mexico's families, especially children, from policies that create fear and destabilize communities. We are committed to upholding the rule of law and ensuring public safety, but we must also safeguard the ability of families and childrens to access education, healthcare, and justice without fear of persecution. And in this document, it talks about that guidance that he is giving to local communities, he is giving to our county manager as we are directing her to take a look at policies for these safer community places. And, um, I hope that everyone will, will take a look at it, or you could go online and look at that as well as a community. But, um, it, it's very important for us to know that we have safer places for our community members, all community members. And with that, um, I call a question.
All right, there's been a request to call the question, so, uh, we'll close the floor. Uh, I'll let the other cosponsor, one, one last word here.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I do, I do want to call the question as well. I just want to say that, you know, like I, I mentioned before that our lega-, legacy is so important, but this also is the legacy, right? There, every time we get in a bind, the excuse of, um, blaming everything on immigrants throughout time in history has been what they use. And it's the same, right? We had mass immigration raids and when I was a kid, and then what did we do? We had the Braceto program because we're desperate for folks to come and be a part of our community. Then we throw them out again and then beg them to come back when we need them. So, um, this is just us protecting, and we've been here, and this is nothing new. Um, I'm thankful for us to be strengthening these policies.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The floor is closed. Uh, commissioners, all those in favor of introduction of the ordinance, signal the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, the, the ordinance is introduced on a four-one vote. Thank you. All right, item eight B, uh, next couple of items are gonna be economic development items. First up, we have the project revenue bond amendment to ordinance for Casitos, Casitas del Camino, Director Marcos Gonzalez presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As, uh, discusses the amendment to the Casitas del Camino, uh, ordinance, uh, just for a quick overview again, the project revenue bond is a process the county is able to help fund, um, affordable housing projects through low-income housing tax credits and tax exemption. Uh, that this project is on our west side, uh, that will refurbish forty-two units and add additional forty-six units, and a total of five hundred and forty-one residents will be on site. Uh, what we're asking tonight for the amendment is to increase the dollar amount of the project to go from, uh, sixteen and a, um, sixteen and a half million to twenty million. This three and a half million is needed because a gap has been created due to interest rates and ongoing, um, cost increases. And we'll also be taking this for approval to the State Board of Finance. Uh, pending that, I'll stand for questions.
Commissioners, any questions or motions? Commissioner Frank Baca? Your mic.
Uh, Marcos, and I've asked this question many times before, and, and you've answered, I'm sure, many times as well, regarding, um, how we can be certain that affordability, uh, continues on, in this case, with a full thirty-year term. And I know that you are, you understand the process, and I know that you are confident that it's being watched over. For my own personal, um, well-being, perhaps, I would, at some point in time, love to, to see one of these that have been in the pipeline for twenty years. that have been in the pipeline for 20 years, 25 years, to see what measures are in place, not in the next two years, three years, five years, 10 years, but 25 years down the road, to just see how these are being monitored. I, I just, I, it would make me feel better if, if at some point in time you provide that to me. And the other thing I'd just like to note, just for, for the record, and I have ulterior motives for doing this, have to do with my own district, and that is, I would note of these units, 46 are new, but 42 are being refurbished, existing units that have been refurbished. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Frank Baca, for one, yes, we can get with you and go over the safeguards that are in place with this project and other projects. And then, secondly, yes, 42 units are existing, and 46 units will be developed, will be constructed.
And thank you, Chair. I may just one last question. In regards to the refurbishing, I, I bring that up because in my own district, there's a number of housing that are houses that are privately owned, that are much in need of refurbishing assistance. And I will be introducing a measure into, in front of this commission in the weeks ahead to, to emphasize that and prioritize refurbishing of existing homes in, in my district who then are much, much needed in that area. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or a motion? I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Benson. Any further discussion? Not seen any. All right. All those in favor, signal the affirmative.
Aye.
Yes. Any opposed? Pass this 5-0. And we'll go on to the project revenue bond amendment ordinance for West Mesa A.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, this is amendment to West Mesa Ridge A's affordable housing. Once again, this is a project revenue bond for affordable housing. This project, just to reiterate again, is 128 new apartments, so this is a brand-new development and would house over four, over 440 residents. This project is jointly funded between the state, the city, and the county, and was one of the projects that was funded through the legislature's 110 million. We're asking for extension of the ordinance. The ordinance is scheduled to close here in November, and they will need to actually close in December. They need the additional time because they've been waiting to hear back from HUD, and now with the government shutdown, that's pushing that out a little bit further as well. So we do plan to close on this project in December, and they plan to break ground here very shortly. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Barbara Baca?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and I just wanted to express really strong support for this. We're talking about how many units. Remind me again, 448 new?
448. Well, it's new, new residents.
New residents.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, so it would be 128 new apartments. And then we have to remember that its sister project, West Mesa Ridge B., which was also funded from the state and will be coming for bonds as well, is also 128 units. It's just a carbon copy of, of this development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Gonzalez. So this is a great project. In my district, it's affordable housing. It is a good partnership, and I am so pleased with the work that our, our staff has done on this, you, Mr. Gonzalez, county manager, and working with the, with the state with this new affordable housing money. And we need this time to move it forward to be a successful project, so I urge your support.
All right. Commissioners, any further questions or comments? Seen, and we'll close the floor. All those in favor, signal the affirmative. Yes?
Aye. Yes.
Any opposed? Pass this 5-0. And we'll move on to item D., which is the notice of intent to expand and preserve the Ventana Ranch apartments. Director Gonzalez?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as discussed, this is for the Ventana Ranch apartments. What we're asking to be approved tonight is for tax exemption to be added to this project. This project is currently a 4% low-income housing tax credit project, but it went through the Mortgage Finance Authority or Housing New Mexico for their tax credits and didn't receive tax exemption. The development, Guardian Development is looking to, over the next 30 years, put in over $31.9 million of renovation into the apartments and will, completely over time. In order to do that, they do need a tax exemption. So without the tax exemption, they would not be able to move forward. And just for clarity, it's 25 years, not 30 years. During this renovation, they would actually be taking the 72 market rate units that they have on site and be moving those into some of the more affordable units. So there are 288 existing units, and they would be having an AMI from 120% all the way down to 30%, which is some of the more unneed, unneeded as well with those lower income limits. This is just, once again, an overview of the different income limits that show that with our different families. And some of the improvements that will be happening into the area include modernizing many of the building systems, the HVAC, and reinvestment into many of the areas. And this is part of what we call the non-PRB process to provide tax exemption. Unlike the previous projects that we, we just talked about, where there are bond issuances with them, there is no bond associated with this project. We really invented this process to be able to provide more services to how, to affordable housing developments. The first project to go through this was with Yes Housing and their Caia Acorta project. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners, any questions or motions? You're the sponsor.
I'll make the motion, please.
Second.
A motion from Commissioner Benson, second from Commissioner Barbola. Yes, Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes, Marcos, I just want to, again, make sure, I, I think the PRB is a, is a great invention, a very smart way to, to, to promote a particular type of project. I, I just have a question in, in terms of, I make sure I'm looking at the right one. This is developed by Guardian Real Estate, is that correct, this project?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, yes. So this project was originally developed by TBG Properties, which is another developer that we worked with in the past. They're the ones that are doing the Tierra Alinda project. They have since sold their portfolio to Guardian, and part of the purchases that they're wanting to do is actually redevelop a lot of the properties and improve them.
Yeah, thank you. And, and, yeah, that's what I was getting at. And I read that they have extensive experience and, and a large portfolio nationally. Is, I'm just curious about the company, Guardian Real Estate. Are they a non-for, not-for-profit, or are they a private, private enterprise? I just, I didn't see anything in relation about that company in particular in terms of ownership.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, it's a for-profit company.
And again, just from understanding at the, and I had the chart there really quickly, but I didn't see it. I know I looked at it earlier in the day as well, but at the end of this development, redevelopment, what is the percent, maybe the easiest way to say it, what is the percentage of units that will be at market rate?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Frank Baca, at the end of the day with this new piece, there will be zero market rate units. And currently, there are 72, and that would be moved to zero. And they would be, as in the screen here, we have, they would be moved to some of the other units here. And there would be 10 units that would be added for, at the 30% AMI.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Baca?
Oh, thank you. I, I have a couple of comments, and I'll just say it once for this one, and the same applies to the other one. I'm not going to support either of these. I think this is corporate welfare. That's what I think these both are. This is a very large, national company that specializes in this. Their website has a portal for partners, which are investors, so they attract, you know, private capital, which is, is great, not, not hating on that. I think that that's good. I, I encourage success. And, you know, I'm a business owner, a capitalist myself, and so nothing wrong with, with success and people making money. But I think that, as Commissioner Frank Baca has often alluded to, I think that we have, and this is nationwide, I think we have an emerging homeless housing industrial complex, which is just an industry that is built around profiting off of the unhoused or those that are very low income. And for me, it's one thing when it's partners like Yes Housing, or, you know, local nonprofit, or even for-profit developers, but they're keeping their money here. They're, they're, you know, those, the leadership of those organizations, even if they're very well-paid, they live here, they go to dinner here. This is a group that's just going to export our money, frankly, to investors and, and, you know, probably highly-paid leadership. They purchased this property, this says July, but on their website, they announced that the sale closed in September. They, it was advertised as a half-a-billion-dollar acquisition of, you know, I think it included these properties as well as others around the country. So clearly, they have significant resources. I mean, that one acquisition is half of our general fund budget. And so why would they acquire these if they couldn't operate them? And there's things in here that, that really concern me, like we are going to pay, or we're going to abate the taxes to renovate their HVAC systems. City ordinance, and I believe county ordinance also, requires that landlords maintain heating and cooling systems. So we are going to pay for something that they already have, but they want to, you know, improve or rehab, as, as you have to do with, with old buildings, something that they're required to do. And, and, you know, the problem here is like, to my earlier comments, we are living, I believe, in a society where we have socialism for the billionaires and capitalism for everybody else. So we, we bail out, we give money away to the big corporations and the big investors with this trickle-down economics. They're going to bring jobs, they're going to, you know, they're going to give us a few more market rate, or a few more affordable units. But in the meantime, on this one property, we are giving away $6.8 million of future tax money. And so the 200 and some, I think it was $274,000 a year in taxes that we're abating, I think that's about two sheriff's deputies, if we just look at the, you know, FDE equivalents, retirement, benefits, salary. So we're, we're foregoing that for 25 years, at least. We're committing future commissions, which is kind of odd that we're able to do that because it specifically says in our charter that we should not commit future commissions to actions, but we are. And, and we do this on a regular basis. And, and I, again, I'm okay with it when it's local people, when it's new buildings. That's, that's a different thing too, right? They're building something new, something we didn't have. But this, this makes no sense to me. They already had, they bought this. If they did their due diligence, they knew what was wrong with it. And yet they come hat in hand to the county and say, hey, we need all this money so that we can do our job. And so for me, as somebody that runs a business, that owns apartments, that's the cost of doing business. I don't go run to the government and ask for money every time that I need to do a repair. You do the repair, it's part of the business. So I, I don't support this or, or the next one, and that's my piece. Commissioners, anything further? Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to say that these are tax abatements for increased low-rent apartments. If it doesn't pass, that's fine. It'll go back to market rate. And it was, it was the work that primarily Commissioner Barba, Barbara Baca did, but I think you were involved as well, getting 100 million from the state for affordable housing. And I just want to be clear, that's not, that's not just going to, just the people that need it. And just because a nonprofit takes that money doesn't mean that there's not profit being made. Let's just clarify that. Yeah, we've, we've got tons of nonprofits in the state. The largest employer in the state that's non-governmental is a nonprofit, Presbyterian Hospital. So if it doesn't pass, that's fine. But I just want to clarify, the other money that's going to affordable apartments, I want to make sure it's clear that there's profit being made elsewhere. It's just through a different tax structure, maybe going through salaries. Yeah, and we do need affordable housing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair, Barbola?
Thank you. I, I really appreciate this conversation. I too, I, I talk often that I live next to probably, which was one of original Albuquerque's original largest affordable housing. It was made in the, or in the late 60s to specifically house refugees from Vietnam. And I think those apartments are still there, the same apartments built in the late 60s. And over time, and I think they must have got some ARPA money, because now they put on like a really bad paint of gray coating that, in my opinion, makes the building look even worse. And now they must have got some federal money, and they're putting up a fence. Before, they used to have grass everywhere. As a kid, I wanted to go into the projects because they had these mass areas of grass and trees, and I could roll my, ride my roller skates in shaded area. And I used, and I never really knew that they were like the low-income or affordable housing places. I just wanted to be there because they had all this grass. Well, now they're putting up a fence around it, so it looks like I live next to a prison or an encampment. And there's, the grass is no longer happening. There's no, everything that was once green is slowly turning just brown, and the dirt, the grass is dying, and it's dirty. They put a bunch of rocks where there used to be grass. So I just, I, I feel so, I'm thankful for this conversation. I'd love for us to look more into what does it mean? Because those apartments, my whole point of my story was to say that those apartments have been there for 50 years, right? Almost 50 years next year, and they've maybe made some renovations. But the number of people, if you just take one of those units that have gone through, must have paid for that property 10 times over, right? Like 10, 20, 40 times over probably for each and every apartment, because folks don't stay there. They're moving out, and new folks are moving in. And so I guess I just, I understand, and I want the, and I, I'm going to support these tonight because I want folks to be able to have quality living. And when you've been in apartments that have been there for so long and, and the, and the owners are refusing to improve them, I want folks that live in my community, my community's the most densely populated, probably has the most of the low-income affordable housing units, and I want them to be able to live in better, qualified, dignity, more updated units. I will support this in the next one that's in my district. But I really appreciate this conversation, and I'd love for us to dive in and think about where we stand in the future with this for our community.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Frank Baca, and then we'll, we'll go down to you, county manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I certainly appreciate the sentiments and that you're concerned that your air commissioner, regarding this. I had some similar concerns, to be honest with you, because I pretty much gathered with, you know, the ownership type that was, that was involved here. But on the other hand, and the reason I would support, I think, is more aligned with the thoughts of Commissioner Barbola in regards to the, the effect of having your property renovated is substantial, and that's sort of the trade-off, you know, that we're giving the tax benefit or tax break in exchange for them really investing. Because I think, you know, you can, you can improve your apartment a little, or you can improve your apartment a lot. And, and as a small landlord, landlord myself, I know that when you have money available, you know, I know what we do is we put money back into our properties. And I know it's a huge benefit for our tenants when we put in new cabinets and new appliances, whatever the case may be. And also the final, you know, point, I guess, is that it will be 100% affordable. And also the final, you know, the, the point, I guess, is that it will be 100% um, affordable, you know, makes it. But as a general proposition, I, I, I do agree with and, and, and the concerns expressed by, um, by the chair in regards to, um, um, who we are doing business with and who we are, are essentially, um, uh, giving money to, because that's, you know, what we're doing. And, uh, again, I, I will be, you know, presenting something downwind again to this commission where I would advocate that we, we look more at, um, local nonprofits given, but I understand the, the concern about making sure that they're organizations that have a track record of getting things done, because I think money oftentimes we give into an organization with hope and prayer that they're going to do what they say unless they've had the experience and, and substantial time in the business and track record. Because managing property is not for the faint of heart. I mean, it is, it is time-consuming and, and complex at times. And so, um, but, but I, I, I will, um, I will support the, the motion. Thank you.
County Manager Shouse?
Yes, thank you. And, and thank you for the thoughtful discussion. I, I do, um, want to say whenever I see deals that say 100% of anything, I'm, I'm unhappy because I'd like us to be in a position where we have more leverage as we're trying to move through these types of projects. One recommendation I would like to make is that as we are completing the work being done on the Economic Development Policy Plan, where, where the, uh, where a committee did a ton of research and you're going to see that research, plus their recommendations, plus the staff's recommendations, I think that starts to create the policy framework by which we entertain folks who come to see us. One of the challenges is that we haven't had a, taken a giant step back and say, said, what are all the mechanisms for funding housing? And what's the framework that the county wants to offer partners who want to build or refurbish or, or, you know, um, or invest in our community? And so, and, and to your really important point, uh, who are we trying to attract? And frankly, um, as I'm listening to, I, I have some different thoughts about, yes, we want, um, local dollars, I think that's important, you know, local partners, and we're trying to grow local partners so they have more capacity. In the meantime, we're going to be looking for people who are coming outside who are willing to make additional investments. That said, what I would like to recommend is that in the, the spring, late spring, um, but, or early summer, that we do a workshop where we actually have this discussion about what are all the methods that, um, we use to, uh, to finance? How are we holding people accountable? And what kind of framework do you all want us to consider? And let's take a dive at that. Because the questions that you've been asking and raising over the time that I've been here have really helped me understand that, um, if we had a shared framework, it would be much easier for the staff to know who to really try to attract and who to try to work with and then how we prioritize. So, and all the funding streams that you've discussed are so different and they have different implications and utilization of them that I think it might benefit us just to have a more robust discussion. And if you want us to do additional research after that, we're happy to do that on your behalf.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Um, and I would, I would say one final piece, which is that, uh, it's not that I'm against affordable housing or that I don't want that. In fact, I'm just saying we should cut out the middleman. If we're going to do socialism, then let's just have the government build it. I mean, if we're going to, you know, because what we're doing is we're just paying a middleman or in some cases, three middle persons to, uh, run the show for us. And so, you know, we own very little affordable housing and we haven't built any new county-owned, public-owned affordable housing in a long time. And, you know, frankly, we're seeing the same costs, right? We're, we have in our, in our capital outlay request, a request for money to refurbish those apartments that we own. So, it's, it's the same kind of thing, but the bottom line is we, we control that and we have control over the affordability, over the permanency of that, over, um, the management of that, the, the ability to be good neighbors to our community. And, and frankly, we cut out a lot of people in the middle. And it's especially troublesome when they, when they don't live here, frankly. You know, they're not, they're not really contributing to our community, they're not really paying taxes. And in this case, you know, we're, we're not requiring them to pay taxes. So, that's, that's all I was saying. And, and so, uh, totally in favor of those, those local developers. And, uh, I hope we can do some new county public housing in, in the near future because I think that we need to have a mix, uh, at least. But I think that, that what we're doing for the last, well, let's say since the 80s, uh, Reaganomics, it, it ain't working. It's getting worse, not better. And so, that, that's my piece.
Mr. Chair.
Uh-oh, I just, I just started it up. Commissioner Benson?
Not at all. But I, I do want to say, one of our recent projects was the Tiny Home Village, which is county-owned and we directed it all. And, um, it was not efficiently built. It, it was a, um, poorly, a poor use of taxpayer dollars in terms of what we got for how much we spent. So, socialism sounds good on paper, but the reality, once it comes out into real life, usually doesn't work out the way, uh, Karl Marx wrote it out.
Fair enough. Commissioner Barbara Baca?
I guess I would just add to the conversation with, um, our focus on affordable housing and our, um, narrative and, and our plea to the state. And it, it was stated quite well by our Speaker of the House that all hands on deck. That means all ideas are, are good ideas to create all kinds of housing stock. And so, I believe Tiny Homes was a experiment and I think it's a success. And the people who have gone through there and the way that we have now turned that around with our Behavioral Health, um, Authority, I, I, I think we are not going back from that. We are growing it, but we are learning from it. And so, this one to me, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chair, but when I look at this, this table and, and see that, um, you know, we have the whole range of, uh, average median income that are going to be, you know, housed there for, well, what is the, the, the term? I mean, you know, we are guaranteeing the preservation of affordable housing so that it's not market rate if it were, uh, to go the other route. So, without the county's involvement. So, I will be voting for this. I think we need to be very creative and think of all sorts of mechanisms and learn from successes and, and mistakes as, as we move forward. So, I welcome the conversation that the County Manager, um, offered. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the floor. I think Commissioner Baca wanted to get in one more time. Other than that, we're going to close it off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and I also agree with Commissioner Barbara Baca about the, I look forward to that conversation, Manager approach, because I think there's a lot of aspects to this conversation that needs to be, um, vetted out and discussed. As I, I think I've said before, uh, for me, there is, should be a priority, the type of affordable housing. I am very much supportive of, uh, housing for seniors. I'm very much supportive of housing for veterans. And my favorite topic, um, is transitional supportive housing, which I think ultimately is the, is the answer to many of the social problems that we see literally on the streets of Albuquerque every day. And I, and I think to the point that both Commissioner Benson made and Commissioner, and the Chair, I think it is important for, for us to have accountability for our own projects. If we pursue other projects, we need to be accountable, uh, not just for the investment of money, a commitment of money, but to do good work and to expect good results. And I think also, uh, in terms of our negotiation deals with private companies or even nonprofits outside of our entity that are asking for financial support, you know, we should be making sure, and I don't know, maybe we are, I just don't know, negotiating and leveraging what they're asking for, 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 uh, a certain quality of project. It's not just to make it affordable, but the project should be a quality project in turn of the reg, in terms of the renovation, in terms of the grounds and the grass, uh, and the park-like atmosphere, because I've seen good ones and I've seen bad ones. And I think that should be part of our negotiation process is not only what are you going to do in terms of the big picture, but what are you going to do in, 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 in detail that really make this a habitable, living, pleasant place to live for our community? And not just basically, here's some money, go, you know, go out at, you know, corporate welfare, whatever you might want to call it. So, I do think we have to hold ourselves accountable and we have to hold our partners accountable. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. The floor's closed. Uh, all those in favor of adoption of the ordinance, or adoption of the notice of intent? Signal in the affirmative?
Yes.
Aye.
No? And that passes on a four one vote. We'll go on to item E, which is, uh,
Mine.
The same, same thing, uh, for, for a different property with Director Gonzalez.
Thank you, Charlie Lewis, and members of the Commission. As you say, yes, this is for the companion project for Monzano Mesa Apartments. It's also with Aguardian for 26.8 million dollars of investment for the redevelopment of the properties. And again, similarly, this is for a 25-year exemption with, uh, using the non-PRB process to provide tax exemption. And they will provide, uh, a pilot payment over that term as well. So, this is for 224 units in the southeast area of the county. And currently, all of the units are at a affordable rate. Just additional 10 units will be now pushed down from the 60% AMI to the 30% AMI. So, adding some deeper affordability into the development as well. Income. And then, once again, similar upgrades will be made to Monzano Mesa as that were made to the Mentana piece. And then, once again, this is the non-PRB process, provides tax exemption for existing low-income housing tax credit projects. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director, Commission. Any questions or, uh, motion?
I just, yeah, I just, um, like to say, again, I appreciate the conversation before. This is in my district and when I was a young executive director of Young Women United, we had so many of our young women that lived exactly in these apartments. So, I know how important they are, but I also know that they will need big renovations because they've been around for a long time. So, um, I ask, encourage support for my colleagues.
Did you want to make a motion?
Oh, move to approve, sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion from the Vice Chair and a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Commissioners, any discussion? All right, seeing none? All those in favor, signal in the affirmative?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm on nope, that passes on a four one vote. All right, item nine A is also economic development. The New Mexico Transportation, Department of Transportation funding for planning and preliminary design to support the I-40 trade port, South Broadway hub and the additional lanes to Attrisco Vista.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, this, uh, discussed, this is for, uh, budgeting 1.5 million dollar grant from, uh, the DOT that's specific for trade port projects. And this is for the I-40 trade port, uh, corridor project. We'll be doing two pieces with this. Uh, the first is 1.2 million will go into the, the design analysis report. They'll tell us what type of infrastructure that we need to place and where we need to place it from water, wastewater and a road network infrastructure. Um, and then 300,000 will be used in the Attrisco Vista corridor. It's important to note that this money will be leveraged against the, uh, about 5 million dollars in build USDOT grant that we have to be able to get both areas up to 30% of, uh, the drawings done to be able to then enter into a design build and attract additional, uh, funding for this public, um, infrastructure. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Benson?
I would like to make a motion to approve this. And, um, I just want to point out, this, this has been a long time coming and, uh, Director Gonzalez has been working with his entire staff and the, the whole county has, has been working towards this. It could be, um, to, to accomplish this would be a, a major boon for Burnley County in terms of job creation on the west side, which is where we need jobs, um, in terms of infrastructure funded by the federal government, not just state government, um, reducing traffic, uh, and, yeah, mostly creating jobs, a long-term, sustainable, um, well-paying job. So, um, yeah, I have no questions. I just, uh, want to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. Thank you, Commissioners, discussion? Commissioner Frank Baca first?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, just so I understand this, of the 1.2 million that's going to go to the, uh, South Broadway portion of this, uh, project, is that for the, the design only? Is that money just for design?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca, yes, that would be for the design analysis report. They'll then tell us what type of infrastructure we need to place where. And so, it won't be for any actual physical infrastructure, but just for the design and planning.
And partly, my question is based on the fact that we do not own that property. Isn't that true? Isn't that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca, correct. We don't own the property in that specific area, but we are working with a private, a landowner to develop the first phase of the trade port area.
And, you know, I've, I've heard this presentation many times and, and, um, and to be honest, I'm still not sure 100% I, I understand it. I do appreciate your going out, um, at our invitation, my invitation, I think the County Manager's invitation as well, to the neighborhood associations, to, I think you went to, um, the TPA, the Transportation Planning Group that I'm on. Uh, I think, and, and you went out to Sada Pueblo recently and I accompanied that and I'm really appreciative of that since it affects, you know, lots of entities in those neighborhoods in particular, so that this information is being, um, put out there. But, you know, the, 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 just reading from the summary, it says, "Supporting clean energy, logistics, transportation and industrial investment infrastructure." I still do not, in my mind, understand how, you know, this facility is going to do what can't otherwise be do, done, quite frankly, just with technology, you know? And, and, and the other question, because, you know, we, we do need to monitor these, you know, these shipments. I, I totally get it. We, but I'm still not fully understanding why we need these, these, these structures when the real issue is, in my understanding, my limited understanding, admittedly, is to, uh, monitor, uh, transportation from the seaport along the corridor. Uh, and, and just, I don't know that, I necessarily need a long explanation of that, but just some perhaps reassurance that there's, there is something that I don't understand there. And, and the other question that I think came up at, and I was at the, the presentation to the Sada Pueblo, um, council, uh, which their governor was in, in attendance as well and, and they were very interested in this, uh, project. And they asked what was, I thought, a very common sense and great question, which is, this is the I-40 trade port corridor, why is it being put on I-25? And, and I think you and I had, had some discussion about that. And because it's hard for me to imagine, understand if this is for purposes of having a, a location for trucks to come to do that thing that, that maybe I don't understand that you might explain now or later, uh, I have a hard time understanding, um, east-west traffic going through the big eye by miles south to take advantage of that or coming through some other route. I understand north-south traffic possibly being part of that. But, um, you know, and I know that there are some issues with looking at the site, but also I'm hearing that now there's 300,000 dollars that is going towards a site there. So, I, I'm really not understanding why this is not more focused on the, the west side location. Maybe you can help me understand that a little bit.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Frank Baca, so at its core, it's a, a logistics and warehousing and being able to place all these items that are coming from Asia or different places and within the seaports that are, don't have the capacity or the place to actually store many of those pieces and actually move them across the country, especially as, um, this administration is so hyper-focused on manufacturing in the US and bringing in smaller components and being able to actually do that manufacturing and increasing the logistics across our trade corridors. And so, the idea is, especially with Albuquerque being the last stop really before, um, it spreads out throughout the country and it's really funnily focused on both the rail and the train infrastructure through our Albuquerque core area of being able to be that location to actually take in that warehousing, that distribution and actually be the ones to do it, but then also to add value by being, adding in additional, um, manufacturing and items where we can actually complete those pieces. For the, actually knowing where the goods are. Currently, there's not a great system about knowing where our goods are and how they're trafficked across the country. And that's one of the grants that we got from the USDOT and working with UC Berkeley in really designing a safety mechanism and a tracking system that can actually be, actually tracking the goods a lot more efficiently through the country as well and where it's at and those, those. those different pieces. In terms of it being located on I-40 versus looking at I-25, it's being able to work with property owners that can actually be part of the partnership, being able to create these different opportunities and having the space and the entitlements of willing to go in and actually complete those items today. There is interest within moving not only pieces by truck, but by rail as well, of being able to have a lot of those items brought in by rail and then pushed out by truck into the different parts of the country as well. And so it's not only just our truck mobility piece that's looking at this, also, the city of Albuquerque is looking at a rail play as well and property that's very close proximity to this area, and then as well as the counties invested into Central New Mexico Rail Park in Las Lunas as well, which is just south of this location as well, that can bring in a lot of that train traffic and those goods and those pieces. And so not only the different rail companies are looking to invest outside of the main seaport areas, just because it's so congested and looking at more in the inland part of the country and being able to do that, so this is the proposition to pitch and push that. And so we've seen a lot of really support from the USDAOT on this piece, but then neighboring states as well, from not only Arizona, but also in Oklahoma, excited about being able to make this kind of pearl strings of activities of different hubs that can support trade and logistics along the way along I-40, which is the country's busiest trade corridor by truck.
Mr. Chair, if I may just want to follow up by, yeah, and I understand the warehousing component, and I actually understand that explanation, and appreciate that. It was much, very helpful to me, and, but you also do raise another question that, at least in my mind, in terms of site, location, two questions. Number one, we've taken a tour of that complex out of Valencia County or that property, that huge industrial complex that's going out there, Business Park is the term I'm looking at, and so, and it seems like, you know, like, I know that that's a part of this as well, and that's, I'm just thinking out loud as to location, 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 and I know that is connected to rail, I know that's connected to, you know, everything but the airport there, the same benefits you see in this South Broadway area. I'm also asking, just asking, I have no idea if there would be any interest at all, but I think, I'm just curious, you know, we made the presentation, Silla de Pueblo, I'm just curious if you had yet made the presentation to Laguna Pueblo. I think it'd be, you know, as a potential, just neighbor or partner, it'd be something I think I would, I would hope would occur at some point in time. I think it'd be worthwhile to have that discussion with them. So, thank you for your information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? I will just say, Commissioner Baca, I share your same, I've been to many presentations and seminars about this, and I, I'm still a little confused myself about what exactly this is and how it will work. So I think we're all in the same place, where we're kind of, you know, this is a, this is a concept, it's very much moving from a conceptual phase to a little bit more of a, a little bit more of an actual, physical effort, but I think it's very early stages. And my comment to the director, when we were having our impromptu briefing last week, was that I, and again, I don't represent this district that you do, but, you know, the idea of this moving into the Mountain View area a little bit, I can see both pros and cons of that, right? As we think about how do we diversify that area away from, you know, scrapyards and fuel terminals, you know, is there an opportunity for some advanced manufacturing or other things? But I can also see where heavy truck traffic, that kind of thing, it may not be an improvement. So I understand your concern, and I think it's, it's still very much a work in progress, but I think it's, at this point, it's, it's money that is meant to, to help design and support the preliminary work. So I support this. All right? With that, we'll close the floor. Mr. Barbo is back with us. So all those in favor, signal on the affirmative?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Director. All right, next up, we have FY '26 acquisition of 3501 Fourth Street with Ben McIntosh to present.
I don't know if my slide's up here.
And Mr. Chair, my apologies for the interruption, but for my clarity, for items 9A and 9B, which were suspension of the rules, we will need resolution numbers issued, and I'm hoping that was already done for the last one.
All right, we'll jump back to Madam Clerk here for just a moment. So we had item 9A, which we just adopted. Could we get a resolution on 9A and 9D?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 9A1 is FR 2025-102, and 9B1 is FR 2025-103.
Thank you so much. My apologies for skipping ahead there. Go ahead, Mr. McIntosh.
And I apologize, it doesn't seem to be my slides are loaded on here. Sorry about that. But if you want, I can continue in lieu of that. The item for you now is agenda item number 9B, request by Real Estate to approve a financial resolution FR 2025-103, and to authorize the county manager to execute a purchase agreement for the purchase of 3501 Fourth Street Northwest Albuquerque, New Mexico, and to execute any subsequent amendments and all documents to perfect title in the proposed property acquisition. The subject building is approximately 20,000, 23,000 square feet, the land is approximately 2.13 acres, and the property is located within the boundary of the city of Albuquerque at the northwest corner of Fourth Street and Mildred Ave Northwest. The property is owned MXM, and the proposed use is a legal permissive use of this property. The purchase of the property is for an all-ages life center and will serve the community by establishing a vibrant hub for community connection, bringing together sports, recreation, arts and fitness, and a restaurant café. The new resources within the community will positively interact with the additional new retail directly to the north, as well as other county purchases within the vicinity in support of this redeveloping area of the city. The property was listed for 2.7 million. An appraisal was acquired by Real Estate with the appraisal at 2.5 million. The seller has agreed to that, that price of 2.5 million. Therefore, Real Estate does request a motion to approve the financial resolution FR 2025-103 to appropriate general fund balance in the amount of $1,520,000 for the purchase of 3501 Fourth Street Northwest Albuquerque, New Mexico. Authorized expenditures exceeding the county manager's $300,000 threshold pursuant to AR 2025-24 in the amount of $2,520,000 to purchase 3501 Fourth Street. To authorize the county manager to execute a purchase agreement for the purchase of 3501 Fourth Street. authorized the county manager to execute subsequent amendments and all documentation necessary to perfect title in the proposed property acquisition. And due to the limited amount of funding available within the general fund, all departments will seek reimbursement to the general fund for any project or initiative funded by the general fund that subsequently receives funding in whole or part from an alternative funding source such as another agency or grant, and this motion does require a 3-2 vote for action. This concludes my presentation. I'll stand for questions from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. So to Commissioner Barbara Baca, it's in your district.
Thank you. First of all, I move approval of this item.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Just in more layman's terms, thank you for that presentation. We don't have the benefit of the slides.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. But just for my colleagues, you know, this is, this is, it's a tire shop right now to the south, immediate south of Caia Cuarta, that was just completed, affordable housing there on Fourth Street across from St. Therese Church, near the Alameda Trail to the north and just east of Garfield Middle School, which is a community school. This is a really great project. We have already approved and have in our coffers the $1 million from the GEO bond program. We have $1 million from our state legislature for this project, and so this is a purchase that is so exciting to the community. We heard from a couple of community members in the Near North Valley, but they have been searching for a place for their community to gather. This is more, much more than that. What we're trying to do with this is something that we're branching out as Burnco builds communities. This is a community revitalization as well as a purchase of property to build a center for all ages. So I'm really excited about it. It's sort of new for us, it's in the heart of the city, but we will be working with the city on, on this project, but this is going to be a, I think, a really cutting-edge idea here where we go in and take a look at the connections that we are creating through this redevelopment, really, of a beautiful, interesting, and strange building that has the architecture in the front that's gookey?
Gookey.
I'm told, yeah.
Gookey, yes.
And so it's going to be really cool, and it's going to be a place that the community has really, really asked for. As you, you might have heard, Merritt Tully, president of the Near North Valley, they have been looking for this. It's been in the pros plan, the need for a community center, and the connection to the affordable housing and, and the revitalization, as I said, of Fourth Street in this area is really the true, you know, goal here. So with this purchase of the property, we will be working with the private property owner next door, yes, housing as we move forward. We will be working with the state of New Mexico to get more funding for full build-out of this, and I just urge your support. It's a, it's a very exciting project for my district. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Baca. There's been a motion by Commissioner Barbara Baca, a second by the chair. Open up the floor for any discussion. Commissioner, Vice Chair Barboa?
Thank you. Just quickly, I want to say, congratulations, Commissioner Baca, I think this is a, and thank you, Ben McIntosh. I really always trust, when you say something's good, I'm going to believe it. But I also am just so excited, because when I first started commission, I talk often about seeing that pros comprehensive planning, and it had exactly that, that our own Parks Recs team had done in their own brilliance. They had said that let's move our community centers more into, and they called them life centers in the comprehensive plan. And I was like, how are we moving towards this? What are we doing to get to it? And so I just really applaud you, because this will be sort of the first of what we're think, what they're calling a life center, and I hope that we can continue to think about that for the rest of our community centers and how we bring that life, that, you know, right now, our community centers, rightfully so, are just sort of seen as like a before and after-school program kind of thing, right? But how do we bring the life, the resources, the people, the various needs of our communities in that area to life? So I'm really, I support this 100% and just applaud you in moving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes, thank you, sir. Yes, I also support this. I'm a big supporter of community centers. I didn't really realize this was a community center when I first started reading about it because of the terminology that was used, but that's okay. I mean, I support it, and I understand now, you know, I've been on the commission a whole nine months now, that it takes time, and there's a process in place and planning and money, all these kind of things. Like, I was just, I can't miss the opportunity to say that we could also use another community center in a place that I'm very familiar with in my district, that we're looking at some potential sites for, we speak, because it is more than a building. As you, some of you have heard me say, I'm not a big fan of buildings and building buildings. I'm bigger fan of programs and doing things that actually benefit people's lives, and this sounds like the sort of project that might do that, especially if it's perhaps intergenerational, and there's other, you know, buildings are very expensive, but these programs do so much for our community, our youth and our seniors, that I think it's, you know, it's, they're absolutely, you know, wise, wise investment. I've mentioned several times, the one on the west side in the city, the Westgate Community Center that I go to occasionally for meetings, just a beautiful, it is a beautiful, brilliant spectacular, but it's because that, there's so many programs there that it brings people together, so many opportunities for kids to be involved and, and people to learn and participate. So yes, I'm very supportive and will continue to support other similar endeavors in other parts of our county as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And the commissioners, all right, we'll close the floor. Any last words, sponsor? All right. All those in favor, signal on the affirmative?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that passes on a 5-0 vote. Congrats, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Let me catch up here because we moved things around. All right, we're on introduction of resolutions. So in general, all resolutions require two hearings before final approval, except in cases of special exemption. The first hearing will serve as the resolution's introduction. Public is encouraged to review the introduced resolutions and sign up to ask questions or provide comments. The following items will be returned at subsequent meetings for final adoption consideration. And so the first item is federal stewardship of public lands in Burnley Oak County, sponsored by myself and Commissioner Baca. So Commissioner Baca, if you want to introduce, go ahead.
You go ahead and lead it off. You want me? Go ahead.
All right. You know, I think this, this is all interconnected with what we've been talking about tonight, the vast federal overreach, and one of the, one of the very few, for now, bright spots, I think, was that we actually saw some bipartisan collaboration on this issue when the initial draft of the Big Billionaires Bill was introduced. It included a sell-off, a vast sell-off of federal public lands, which would have been devastating to New Mexico, states all across the western United States. And we saw, I believe it's Senator Ryan Zinke, might be representative from Montana, Republican, team up with our own legislative delegation, Congressman Vasquez and Senator Heinrich, Senator Lujan, Congressman Stansbury, the whole team from here, Representative Legard Fernandez, and others from across the country to push back and say, no way, public lands stay in public hands, and that's the way we want it, that's the way we like it, that's the way it's been, and it needs to continue to be. Because I think we all know, those lands would have been sold off to that same group I've been talking about all night, the billionaire oligarchs would have ended up with, you know, pristine lands to build their ranches and, you know, private resorts and mine and extract minerals and oil, and, you know, again, once again, leave us all with the bill. And so we had a fantastic victory, but this just reaffirms our commitment as a community along with our partners at the city, the leadership of Councilor Tammy Feeblecorn, who passed a mirror resolution at the city, that we stand strong with our public lands, those need to stay in public hands, this community has a deep history with that, and we're proud of our public lands. I mean, we have one of the top park systems in the United States in Albuquerque and Burnley Oak County, and we wanted to stay it that way. We want it to stay that way, and that is in part due to our federal partners and their commitment to stewarding those lands. I think they can do better, you know, we need better management of our forests and ecosystems and, but we really are passionate, I know my co-sponsor is, that these lands have to stay in the public trust, and so with that. Commissioner Baca?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, ditto. I mean, my career for over 30 years was in parks, open space, trails, and conservation. I believe that our public lands is, is one of the greatest legacies and one of the greatest gifts that we give to future generations. And the United States has done such a great job. I worked for the National Park Service for a very short time, but locally, we partner with the federal government so well. The Land and Water Conservation Fund was, was reauthorized in 2020 with the Great American Outdoors Act in 2020, and that is 900 million a year in federal funds that's going to local communities. In Albuquerque, we have acquired open space from the 70s through the 90s with this money, but it was reauthorized. So we're heading in a really good direction, and we need to assure that we continue in that direction. Again, you know, our public lands, it's one of America's greatest ideas. And so I would not only encourage in the, this resolution, we ask the county manager to communicate that to our congressional delegation and the governor's office and everyone we can tell, and thank them for their support, because our congressional delegation really did, and they reached across the aisle, they worked together with our colleagues on the Republican side to preserve that and keep that out of the big, the big bill. And so we just want to reaffirm that through this. And so we just want to reaffirm that through this resolution. Again, we're partnering with our colleagues in the city because we all believe that this is the right thing to do. So again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for including me in this, working with Councilor Feeblecorn, who was the leader on the city council side, but my colleague Joaquin Baca as well, and just urge your support. This is, this is an important communication to, to our colleagues in Washington, D.C.
Thank you, Commissioner. Open the floor up. Did we make a motion?
You did.
Okay. I couldn't, can't remember. Okay. Any discussion? Open up the floor. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, I support this. I think you two are correct in voicing your support for this to our delegation, and I encourage county manager to do the same. And, and I echo Commissioner Baca's sentiment, that's one of our treasures, and, and that's one of our, our nation's treasures. No other country in the world has a public lands system like we do, public parks, national parks, federal land, and we need to preserve it, not just for us, but for our future generations. So yeah, I think this is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Vice Chair Barbosa?
I'd just like to say thank you both for bringing this. I, you all hear my stories of hardships and growing up with a father who was an alcoholic and a heroin user and a, my mom, who was a factory worker, and we lived next to the, in the most whatever. But the thing that if there's anything to attribute to anything good in my life, it's that I got to be in all of our public lands across our whole state, fish all our rivers, go to all our lakes, and camp out all summer long until you couldn't any longer. So I thank you for this, and I support it 100%.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Any further comments before we close the floor? All right. Floor's closed. All those in favor of introduction of the resolution, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you, colleagues. And next up, we have Commissioners Frank Baca and Commissioner Walt Benson for the Task Force for Speeding in Burnley County. Commissioner Baca?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this is really to, to really start a, a conversation and to really examine some of the options and alternatives that exists out there in the, throughout the country, quite frankly. I, as I've said many times, I think in meetings, small meetings at least, that I, I don't think, I can't remember a single meeting that I've been to, Neighborhood Association meeting that I've been to this year and even into before, you know, late last year when I started, which is easily over 100 meetings, and that I haven't heard speeding as an issue and a concern. It came up at a meeting that we had with our legislative delegation at the AIPCC, All Indian Public Cultural Center lunch, and, and there was a legislator from the Northeast Heights that engaged in some communication and conversation with somebody, and then she kind of, with the sheriff, and I think perhaps Sheriff Yurinev all in that conversation all, and she came up to me and we started talking about it as an issue in, in her area as well. And just this last week, there was that tragic accident that happened in front of U and M Hospital of a, of a, of a bright young individual who chose a career in helping others as a nurse who was killed by a vehicle speeding down. And I, I don't even want to think about all the different, you know, examples of disasters, including probably the, one of the worst ones of in front of the Botanical Gardens of that young boy who was crossing the street with his family. And I mean, I mean, it's just tragedy after tragedy after tragedy after tragedy. And I know that we're, you know, we're doing all we can, you know, with the resources that we have. And I, this is just basically to have a conversation. As you see, there's two different options, that we do it internally with our own task force and, and recruit folks from within our community, or that we look, you know, at a, hiring a consulting firm out with this where I want some input from the county manager in terms of the way to perhaps go if this is, the commission is inclined to approve this. But it is literally life and death, and I know in my district, we do have a project to, almost $9 million to make a section of Coors safer, because at that time, Coors was the most dangerous street in the country. Not just in the county, not just in the state, but in the country. And there's so many ways that we address it, but I'm not sure that all of them are effective in terms of the traffic calming approach that we take. I know there's different types of devices, approaches, some at different heights, some at different shapes. The one on, on, right in front of the yards, I think that's on Second Street, sure gets my attention because it's a flat table type of traffic stop, it gets, you know, my attention real quick, the first time I went over it. I think in talking to the sheriff, who I thought might be here to talk about this, he's not, of course, but, you know, he's a big fan of technology. And the truth of the matter is, we're never going to resolve this by having a cop at the corner. We're never going to have enough cops at the corner, nor do we really want a cop at every corner, right? It's going to be addressed, in my opinion, through smart technology. Drones is one aspect of that, integration of drones with, with cameras, with license plate readers, with other technology. And, and you know, when I talk about this, and some of my friends have pushed back a little bit, and they're concerned about, you know, fines and whatever, and I appreciate that concern, but the truth of the matter is, consequence is not a matter of punishment, it's a matter of deterrence. And that is what this is about, deter, that's behavior that, in my opinion, has become epidemic. And I don't know if it's, I'm just more sensitive now because of this position, or, or if it's something that's really going on, but I, again, I hear it a lot, every place I go. And so I would, I would invite fellow commissioners to, to weigh in on their thoughts about that, and if they're showing clients to support it one way or the other, I would like to hear their, their thoughts as well in terms of what, what manner that it should proceed. But I think it's a very important public safety issue for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And yeah, I just want to commend Commissioner Frank Baca for moving forward with this, and I'm happy to join him on, on this task force motion. The, I believe actually Commissioner Barbosa is the only commissioner here when we passed the speed camera ordinance. And, but it was, it was for the same reason. It was, it was the deadliness on the streets. We were concerned with affordability, but were, the primary concern was safety. Mr. Martinez, county attorney, helped us draft this legislation, which made it constitutional because it had been rejected before when, when the prior city administration had, had set up speed cameras. And I'm, and I agree with Commissioner Frank Baca, the, every time I'm talking to constituents, this is one of their top three concerns. The only people that I talk to that don't like the speed cameras are the ones who get tickets. Including myself. Yeah, and, but that's okay. If you don't want to pay the ticket, then don't speed. And, and if you do get a ticket, you don't have to pay it with finances, you can actually contribute time through community service, which is fine with me. Actually, I don't care if we make a penny out of it. If we increase the safety in the streets and decrease speeding and decrease deaths most of all, then that's good. And so, and, and also, the whole speed camera thing was a force multiplier for law enforcement. It's not to replace them, it's not because it's just as good as cops, they're not. But it allows cops to go take care of more serious issues, and it, it's a multiplier for the force. And actually, the sheriff has done that really well with additional adoption of technology. And, and so this, this task force, I think, is, is excellent because Commissioner Baca is speaking with him. His, his goal is to say, well, what else is out there? Speed cameras are good, but it's not enough. Maybe we need more of them. Maybe we need a, we've, in working with Elias in his department, we were able to use data on where we're placing the cameras. So it wasn't just subjective. Now, as a commissioner, you can request special locations within your district if you so choose, if there's enough cameras available. But, but outside of that, it's being driven by just the raw data on where the accidents are happening, where the traffic accidents are happening the most. And so, so it takes out the subjectivity, any kind of, you know, bad perception of over enforcement. But what this will do is, I think, takes it to the next level, which it needed, which is to see what else is out there, what other technologies that we're not thinking of. How can we complement the sheriff's department? How can we complement the city with our own initiative? And, and also put authority here on the commission, which I liked with the cameras as well, is that the, we're not a law enforcement agency. However, through the speed camera ordinance, we, we can enforce those ordinances with, with tickets. And so it, so when, when, you know, constituents are complaining, we're able to actually do something to reduce crime besides just calling the sheriff. And, and he's a great partner, but he may not, he, he won't be in office forever, and, and there's going to be other sheriffs. But this, this allows us as a commission to take care of things now and, and complement the sheriff's department. So yeah, thank you, Commissioner Frank Baca, for starting this, and, and I urge my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners? I would just want to say thank you, Commissioner Baca, for, for putting this forward, and I think that there's a, as was just stated by your colleague, I think there's an opportunity for increased coordination. That's something that I really think is, is maybe an interesting multiplier, you know, is there ways that sheriff's department, APD, cameras, all of that can kind of coordinate together, work together to, to drive increased enforcement? But also are there opportunities for increased education and outreach, right? Making people aware of the consequences of this behavior and the very minimal, if any gain that, that you see out of speeding as, as an individual getting somewhere one second faster or whatever, if, if even that, you know? And so, you know, versus the risk to lives and property loss. So I think this is a, this is a good start. Obviously, it's going to require follow-up, but I think because based on whatever the recommendations are, I, I hope we can, you know, move forward in implementing those, but always open to new ideas and new perspectives, and we certainly need them on this issue. So thank you. All right, I keep losing track here. Did we make a motion on this?
I don't think we have a motion. I would be, I would make a motion. Is approved, then, yes.
A motion from Commissioner Frank Baca, and a second from Commissioner Benson. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of introduction, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes on a five zero vote.
Mr. Mayor, just to go ahead? Make one inquiry of the county manager in terms of the two options that she might think would be most appropriate in terms of going forward on that, just at this point.
You know, thank you so much for asking. The, the staff and I have had a chance to, to discuss it, and we're really excited about alternative two because we think it will allow us to do a broader scan of best practices, not just in the state of New Mexico, but really across the country. And Elias, do you maybe want to talk just a little bit about who you thought might be a partner for that?
All right. The engineer's having trouble with technology. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, yeah, we've been looking in, in the traffic industry, and I'll put my traffic staff and myself as a traffic engineer up against some of the best ones in the state. But we all typically will go to Texas A&M, to the Texas Traffic Institute. They're the leaders in, in traffic safety, traffic innovations and such. So this is the reason that in, in talking with the county manager, our recommendation was to go with the consultant-led. Through any, through a number of the consultants we actually have on our on-call, we can, we can subcontract to the Texas Transportation Institute. So that's why we're encouraged to go that direction. Like I said, we try a lot, what we can, what we know of, but we completely agree with, with you, with all the discussion you had up there is, we need to look outside. We need to look at the new stuff. We need to look at innovations and stuff that's outside the box. Because we've tried everything with our inventory, and adding the automated speed cameras was something else that we added to our toolbox, and I think we just need to grow our toolbox.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Chair?
Sorry, I just want to ask one question. I think, I guess we have heard results that the speed cameras have worked. I just want to say that out loud while we're having this discussion.
Correct, and worked in the sense that it is modifying behavior.
Yes.
Right.
Modified my behavior.
Yeah, slowing down, slowing down speeding.
Thanks.
Right.
Okay, so they have worked, and this is to continue to see how we, and I really love, especially since we're in, I feel like I've learned like, oh, okay, we do road diets, and then, but yet we're asking for a wider road here, but winner, and so I really appreciate this study so that we can just all learn more and not just be guessing. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We'll go on to item C, budget, the fiscal year 2026 first quarter budget reconciliation. And we have Budget Director Jackie Sanchez present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez, Director for Accounting and Budget. This is the introduction for the fiscal year 2026 first quarter budget adjustments agenda. These agenda items are presented each quarter if there are any necessary budget adjustments. The county is required to submit quarterly detailed budget adjustments to the State Department of Finance and Administration, DFA, upon the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. The FY '26 budget was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on May 13th, 2025. It was also approved by the State of New Mexico, DFA, on August 14th, 2025, per State Statute 6-6-2, NMSA 1978. The agenda consists of three motions. To introduce a financial resolution in the amount of $1,082,501, accepting and budgeting additional funding in the Fire Protection Fund. To introduce a financial resolution in the amount of $1,127,437, accepting and budgeting funding for Burnley County Fire and Rescue, BCFR, Metropolitan Detention Center, MDC, and Youth Services Center, YSC, Recruitment and Retention Fund. Also, to authorize county manager or designee pursuant to administration, excuse me, Administrative Resolution 2023-77, to seek reimbursement of the General Fund for any project or initiative funded by the General Fund that subsequently receives funding in whole or in part from an alternative funding source such as another agency, bond proceeds, or grants. If the amount exceeds the county manager's authority, the item will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. In reference to motion one, in April 2025, BCFR applied for fiscal year 2026 fire funds for Burnley County Fire Administration, Burnley County Fire Stations, Village of Los Rancho's, and Village of Tejeras. In July 2025, BCFR was notified of the amount awarded to the departments for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $3,393,971 versus $2,311,470, which was budgeted for fiscal year 2026. In essence, an increase in budget of $1,082,501 is needed. Motion two is in reference to House Bill Two of the 2025 New Mexico legislation appropriating funds through DFA for recruitment and retention. The amount of funds distributed to Burnley County was not known at the time of the fiscal year 2026 budget development. As a result, approval is needed to accept the budget of the funds in the amount of $1,127,437 for fiscal year 2026. The funds were allocated to departments as displayed in the table, with BCFR at $37,500, MDC at $714,937, YSC at $375,000. And this is for a budget adjustment total of $1,127,437. total of $1,127,437. To provide a brief background for motion one, the primary purpose of New Mexico State Fire Fund Program is to provide financial assistance to local fire departments and districts for operations, maintenance, training, and equipment to enhance fire protection services across the state. This includes the management and distribution, which is the State Fire Marshal's Office under Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, that's DHSEM, is responsible for the distribution of these funds and provides related technical assistance to the local fire departments. The program is primarily funded by the state, premium tax on residential, commercial, building, and vehicle insurance premiums. An annual applications are submitted to the local fire departments and districts based on the information and insurance services office, that's ISO ratings. The State Fire Marshal's Fire Fund Committee determines the amount of allocations to qualified departments and districts for fiscal years. Now, for motion two, the primary purpose of the Recruitment and Retention Fund is to support staff recruitment. To improve personnel capacity, in Burnaleo County, the departments receiving recruitment and retention funds includes BCFR, MDC, and YSC. Therefore, approval of both motions will allow the funds to be budgeted and be available for departmental use. Supporting documentation includes the financial resolution form for the fire fund, as well as the financial resolution and financial analysis form for the Recruitment and Retention Fund Increase. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director Sanchez. Commissioners, any questions or a motion? Make a motion for approval?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Uh, any questions?
I have.
Yes, Commissioner Barbara.
Thank you, thank you always, always, Director, for um your presentation. I was able to follow along. Thank you, and for the documents. I um just uh, so these are for retention and recruitment for these three different entities. Um, I guess I just want to make sure, when I see, so even by the name of Youth Services Center, which I think was a, I I and I want to see what it says here around, um, you know, that will, that the funds are intended to support recruitment and per proof capacity, and specifically for YSC, for the Youth Services Center, um, to support uh staffing, for them to be able to provide more programs. I guess I want to say this is not about um necessarily increasing number of corrections staff. This is about programs, or is it both and? And then, and it's not about capital, about increasing bed, bed number?
Ms. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may speak, um, the funds are for recruitment and staff retention. So it's for hiring, for in the case of MDC, corrections officers, in the case of YSC, youth probation officers, um, and in the case of fire deputy uh firefighters. And then there was a piece for the sheriffs where they were to hire, could hire and recruit uh sheriff's deputies as well. So it originally started in 2025. So back in um September of 2024, we received out of House Bill Two notification that these grants were here. So you all approved at that time to accept those grants. It was spread out over a three-year period. What this did here in the 2025 session, they went in, they, meaning the state legislature, went in and said, let's not take, wait for 27, let's take the 27 allocation and move it up into 26 so that entities could proceed. So this is just taking into that account and budgeting that net difference.
Okay, and it, so it was already approved. This is just approving it into our budget?
Yeah.
But is the restrict, like, is it tied, it's tied to just hiring corrections staff?
Correct. Public safety, depending on the entity that received it, yes.
I guess that's my question. I feel like in um YSC, we have had, I I know that we need um and had a hard time recruiting. So I think um I just, I guess I'm asking for us, like, both that we're not expanding the number of staff, we have vacancies, that that's what we're trying to meet, I guess, is the hopeful, and with the kind of funding that could actually retain, because, right, they're not given the same amount as, they often leave, because once they get a little bit of experience, and they could go make an extra $10,000 a year going to um any one of the other correction facilities, so.
I can answer a few.
Yes, please, thank you.
Chair, Commissioner Barboas, so these funds for YSC specifically allowed us the opportunity to hire 32 new uh youth program officers in the facility. It also helped us to keep competitive wages. On this last time around, if you recall, the uh Youth Service Center received one of the highest amounts of uh increase in salary, and that's tied into this as well. Um, and we continue to use it for recruitment efforts as well. But it's primarily towards the salary of the 32 that we have, actually, it was 33. We lost one, so it's 32 that we had hired um into YSC. And I can, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could just add one thing. Um, you may recall that when we had the bigger discussion with all of you relative to labor, we were extremely focused on every place that had a 30% or above vacancy, and that department in particular will benefit from this. I think one of the challenges, and we're going to talk about our legislative strategy in the future, is how um in partnering with the state, we're able to anticipate those kinds of incentives for an extended period of time so we can do a better job of planning for the incentives, and to frankly be as flexible as we can be um with those dollars, because part of what we're trying to learn is how we attract and retain the best and the brightest, and how do we keep them, to your point, in these jobs once we've trained them, uh, and really provide the support they need. Um, you know, because I'll just add one other thing, you touched on programs. We are limited in what we can do if we don't have enough um uh staff to be able to both keep the uh folks who are in our custodial care safe, and to be able to, you know, give them the programming that we know that we all want to give them. So I'm really excited about these grants. I know it's confusing about the way they get budgeted, the funds get budgeted, and appreciate you all keeping your eye on that. Um, and again, I I think just legislatively, we should be thinking a little bit more about what our long-term partnership looks like with the state in these different areas.
And I guess I'll just thank you, thank you both for that answer. And I I'll, I'll support this budget item because I think it's important to get those. But I, just like you said, like, the YPO, they're called JPOs because they're juvenile program officers. Um, we're, we take a different approach when it comes to minors, right, than corrections? And just that, I I don't know that we've been had, that our JPOs have had the kind of up-to-date training um to be able to be both um working with this population um that is pre-adjudicated and often for violent offenses, because our legislature has kept nonviolent minors out of our um justice system, but that these that were getting trained and and those things. And I know that's not on this item, but I just don't want to lose the conversation that just putting more corrections-type um folks in is going to solve our our issues that we have at at YSC. So, thank you.
One recommendation.
One recommendation I would make is that I I think there would be a lot of value, now that Tamara has been with us for a while, to do some briefings. And if you haven't, I I know some of you have had an opportunity to go more recently to get a tour, but I would really recommend doing that. And I think, you know, for two reasons. I think the point you raised is very valid, that we're looking for a very specific skill set, and we're trying to grow that skill set and then retain that skill set. So it's all part of the the same discussion. Uh, but I would also say, um, Commissioner, I think you, Vice Chair, I'm sorry, that you've been very um thoughtful and very purposeful in helping us understand how we do a better job of providing these kinds of services. And I really do think we're moving in the right direction, not to say we couldn't do more. So I'd be really honored to give any of you a a tour who haven't had a chance to do that in a while.
Thank you, County Manager. Uh, I want to thank uh DCM Reagan and and DCM Perez for the quick response to my questions uh last night. And I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the fire fund question, because uh the, basically, what I what I was getting at, and and I think you you confirmed what I was saying, is that our budget was for $2 million, and now we've got $3 million. Um, so the need didn't change, in in my opinion or my thinking, right? We didn't add a new station or or add more firefighters. Um, but so so, you know, we set a budget for the fiscal year, and now we got $1 million more. So what is the gap that we're filling with that? Or or, you know, even if we're shifting resources around, what will those resources that we shifted go towards?
So, uh, Chairman Olivas, that's a, it's a loaded question. So basically, we did add a station. Um, that's part of where you're seeing a reflection of Station 66 in these numbers. So it's 168,000, I believe, that is part of this $1 million that is that we are asking in overage. Um, but we have actually been depleting our savings. We we keep a certain amount of money that we roll over every year out of the fire funds for emergency-type purchases so that we're not having to come and tap into the county's general fund. We utilize those funds. We've actually drilled drilled that down to almost a negative um within the fire department, and that's a result of just the general cost of doing business um within fire and rescue. So what this will do is help us to build those back up or keep equal with what what the charges and the costs are that we're faced within the the fire industry. As you can imagine, just as anywhere else, I'm going to set a bunker gear that used to cost us $2,000 is costing us on the on the upwards of $6,000. Um, radios used to be 2,500. We're paying 6,000 for those. So as we're seeing prices of everything else go up, we're filling that within fire and rescue. And we've been really, really fortunate to not have to ask for more out of the general fund because we've been able to spend within our means utilizing the fire funds. And this extra uh almost $1 million will just help to secure that going forward. And the result of this money is from the ISO rating. If you remember us coming before you a couple months ago, we went from a, from an ISO III down to an ISO II, which automatically increases the amount that you're allocated per station. And that's why you're seeing this increase, too. This isn't something that's not normal. We we do this reallocation every year. This one's just higher because of the added station and the lowered ISO rating, and that's why it's looking like a lot bigger amount than what it has historically.
Thank you. That explanation put the pin in it. I I appreciate it, and thanks for explaining that to me. All right, with that, if there's no further discussion, uh, we have a motion and a second, so close the floor. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. All right, next up, uh, we've got a couple of capital improvement program items. We've got our Burnaleo County Policy Priorities for the 2026 regular legislative session. Ms. Kathy Court to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Kathy Court. I am the Chief of Government Affairs. And um tonight, uh, I've got two items for you tonight. Uh, the first, let me just help myself here. There you go. Um, the first before you tonight is a motion to approve or introduction an administrative resolution establishing Burnaleo County's House Bill Two and policy priorities for the 26th New Mexico Legislative Session. Um, I'll run through the slides pretty quickly. You've got them in your packet um last week. But basically, the draft resolution in front of you is a result of the survey that each of you filled out, and thank you for that. We really appreciate it. And um each of the slides, oops, I'm going the wrong way. Um, each of the slides uh highlights for you the the main categories that were included in that survey. Um, just to give you a reminder, you all ranked one as a critical need, five as something that uh, an action that can be deferred indefinitely. And so basically, what um we did was kind of average out your scores and identified in green the 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 items that were of critical importance to the majority of you. And so in this first slide, we're looking at housing affordability and homelessness, and um that green item there in green, 1.8, means that that ranked pretty high, critical importance. And so it's part of the resolution in front of you. Um, we, you also uh provided your feedback to crime and public safety issues. Again, highlighted in green are the critical issues that are reflected in your draft resolution. Um, healthcare access, behavioral health, and workforce shortages. Um, in green are the items that are reflected in your draft resolution. Um, the water rights, natural resources, and environmental sustainability. Uh, none of these items ranked in green, and so they're not reflected in your draft resolution. Economic development and infrastructure investments, um, we have two items that ranked very high as critical importance to you, and so that's also referenced in your draft. Uh, education, workforce development, and tribal relations. Uh, you've ranked two in green, and so those are reflected in your draft as well. And then, of course, capital outlay reform, uh, you all ranked in green one item in particular, the Capital Development Program Fund, the expansion of that. And so that's reflected in the resolution as well. Um, the other categories were related to state and local tax structures. You you indicated that as a critical need, and so um I've done my best to draft some wording for you in your resolution in regards to tax reform. Um, what happens next is that this will come back before you on October 28th for final approval. Um, at that point, we'd be able to share it with the governor and House and Senate leadership. And with that, I'm going to stand for questions. Um, happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Court. Appreciate the the brevity in your in your presentation there. That's great. Uh, all right, Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Vice Chair Barboa.
Well, I really liked this process. Thank you, Ms. Kathy Court. Um, I also just wished, as I was going through it, that we could have a discussion on each, but I know we don't have the time for that. But I think, you know, for me, um, I would like this commission to consider some of the, I guess, if there's, and maybe this is even up for a debate, but some of them I either put a zero or a five, not because I don't think they're important, but because I don't think they're in our purview as a county. So um, like, yes, I support tribal education totally, 100. But is there anything that I can help do as a county commissioner right here, especially in in to influence the state legislature? I don't know. And um, so I, because I guess I, I would like for us to maybe think for our next time we do this, to think about what we consider things within, like, county authority. Um, and so just to say that piece. And then, in your summary, um, you sort of get list those priorities. Um, I had it a minute ago, but it was pretty succinct. It gave like the top five or six, not on this thing you shared, but in our doc, on our packet. Oh, here it is. In our packet, it says, we'll pursue include housing, criminal justice jails, youth services, infrastructure, healthcare, workforce economy. That those are, I guess, the top out of this process, one, two, three, four, five, six priorities, not on your presentation, but in our packets on page 947. Very down there. It's a summary to this, though. I guess I just want to make the point to say, uh, those sound like great, and I love the sort of dwindling down of what we're going to do. I would really like to ask us to change, or when we, this maybe will become in publications, but under youth services, I know we we call our our juvenile detention center a youth services center, but I don't want to think of our only youth services focused on the jail. So I guess I just, can it be under criminal justice jails? Um, we know, or or, I don't know, I just don't like the naming it Youth Services Center, and that's the youth services, or we're not thinking about the full spectrum of youth services. So it's more just a words matter, and I don't think that, you know, finding more money for our detention centers necessarily use services. Um, that's my only comment. And again, I like this process. I don't know if there'll ever be a time that we can go through it together. I'd love to do that, but um, but that might be making quorum, so.
If, may I um add a comment to um Vice Chair Barboas' comment, but we do have under House Bill Two funding priorities, the need for the state to help us support the infrastructure that we operate and manage as a county i- in the realm of youth and in the uh realm of adult jails. So that's distinguished. Um, and I think, yeah, I just called it a youth adjudication facility, but we can change the wording if 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 that, if that pleases you.
I just like the truth about it. Like, youth adjudication sounds right, or youth detention. sounds right or youth detention.
And if there is a mention of youth services please let me know I I think.
It's not in that it's in our packet.
It's on the cover yeah and I and I think let me just if I could jump in I I think the point you're raising is a really valid one and I also think that um just to say this in terms of shaping this discussion that we what we're hoping is that uh by refining this process so your feedback is really really important by but by refining this process that not only are we gonna be reacting in our you know to our legislative strategies but being much more proactive so our hope is that we have this same discussion in the March timeframe like March like really April because they'll they'll be done and we're gonna be pushing ourselves to be ahead of the game what this was a reflection of is everything that was happening in the state versus what I think will happen next time which is we'll wanna still use some sort of a survey tool but we're gonna be thinking about what do you all wanna put your stake in the ground over and then seeing if we can get that embedded into the different committees because this is much more reactive so in some ways even the but it's great feedback about the language but what I was also gonna say is that even in the survey questions your your point is a good one which is some may not have been applicable to the county but what we were asked to do was make sure we had our eyes on the entire state um and so we'll learn from that you know in terms of making sure we don't make you make a choice it's sort of a false one so thank you for that feedback.
Thank you.
All right uh I I'm gonna grab the floor real quick here and and introduce uh some amendments that that I made and Commissioners my apologies there's a a second version of the amendments that I'm gonna pass out here so it has the star on it it's exactly the same as the other version that I passed out except for uh a few changes highlighted in red on the second page so they're very minor changes uh that the that the county manager asked for um in that in that second whereas uh or in the new new therefore clause um so I did not realize that this was the the first reading of this I thought this was actually final adoption because we had I thought we had heard a similar version of this back in September August timeframe um so I was expecting this to be on on final adoption but I don't think that that precludes um hearing this now but I I may be I may be dreaming.
We're also tired that I'm like what did that was I there yeah I mean fair fair point.
I I don't know um so it it's neither here nor there so um all that to say.
Oh you know we did a kind of a workshop at your request so instead of doing the the first reading we did the workshop and that's why we brought it.
It was a discussion.
That's right it was it was intended to be more so you all could talk to each other more.
That that's sounds familiar so um I just wanted to propose a few uh changes to this I I really don't think this is this is bad and most of these changes are are really kind of stylistic minor um but I do think that um you know there's a few changes in the whereas is I'll I'll you know just let you read through those I think that they just um sort of condensed some of the language a little bit I did work with with Mr Weeks as well as the county manager uh our our head state lobbyist and county manager to uh to go through these changes so I won't spend a whole lot of time on the whereas is because um I I think those are fairly minor wording changes um so getting into this kind of the meat of it here the the therefore is number one just changing the funding to recognize that there are other appropriations vehicles besides House Bill Two again a minor kind of stylistic change but but nonetheless I think an important recognition that there's there's a lot of spaces we can work in um as we go into the the actual subject matter areas in public safety uh striking the competency effort again this is kind of a living document and I know when we were originally working on this this was very relevant since then the special sessions happened governor signed the bill and and the competency issue I think has largely been resolved for now uh with with regards to district court versus metro court so I I don't believe that that's necessary in there um on the the youth issue uh I I really felt that the language there was was just a little bit unclear as to what uh outcome we were trying to to achieve and I think that from our seat you know what I wanted to see was the prioritization of the well-being of the child I think that's critical um and frankly that's a major gap that we've had in the state for a long time a lot of other states prioritize well-being uh our main priority has been reunification of the family um that doesn't mean that well-being prevents reunification but but when you're emphasizing putting a child back into a home versus what is best for the child that's a very different outcome that you're likely to see um in many of these cases so I think it's important for us to advocate for that change and there is uh building momentum on that I think um moving down on the behavioral healthcare services um striking this this opioid settlement expenditure language um I I believe that we have a a pretty robust effort with our collaborators at the city to to really track and report that through our our data dashboard and through our behavioral health authority so may not be an issue that we need state involvement in um and then adding a section that I think we all really recognize interrelated with the compacts is the workforce issues with healthcare I think we've all heard from our uh resident physicians at the university hospital about the issues that they're facing with their low pay and uh their wages and so just an opportunity for us to advocate for expanding and enhancing their their uh their pay so that it's regionally competitive um but overall some other other um healthcare recruitment efforts loan forgiveness and repayment and other initiatives there and then uh moving on onto tax structures just kind of changing that language a little bit to to get to the meat of this which is uh to to really do almost a similar effort to what we've done with with our economic development uh initiatives that have been led by Commissioner Barbara Baca uh to to really take a look at all the exemptions and deductions and changes that have been made to the tax code I'm probably more passionate about what's going on in the property tax side because we've seen commercial multifamily valuation issues and we've seen you know highest and best use issues uh and all this conflict between local assessors and commissions and commercial groups and and just really asking the legislature to take a a more holistic look at that and I apologize I know it's it's late here but appreciate the uh the allowance here um last page two things uh the multimodal transportation program which was an issue that saw I believe almost unanimous if not unanimous support in the uh house last year died on the senate floor this would have authorized DOT to to uh issue a large amount of bonds for uh state and local roads and other multimodal transportation trails such things uh I think that's something that that we need to support and and be a part of and then lastly just uh adding a little bit of language to to expound on uh the work that DFA and LFC is doing on the capital development program fund so um happy to to field any questions and I I guess I would leave it at the will of the commission if we want to adopt these changes tonight or debate them and then you know consider them at the next meeting that's that's fine with me too but um at least this gave me the opportunity to get these out there and and start the conversation so Commissioner Frank Buck?
Yes Mr Joe thank you for this uh it's good work here a lot of good thoughts uh good work here a lot of good thoughts and um and and suggestions I I would for one ask that we take we consider it at the next meeting and hopefully we can have a chance to read and think through things uh here a little bit more personally I would I would like a little bit more time to understand this but I do think it's good work um for example as far as the competency issue um I I don't know that's the end of the the road on that in terms of the metro court judges um being I think being involved in that would probably from a pers- uh from a systems approach would help but I there may be other issues in competency that are that would be important to uh to support and promote and I I'm saying specifically what they are but I think that this is yeah this is great but just appreciate you taking the time to do this and write these all these but I for one would like to just have a little more time to fully digest this yeah.
I I'm totally comfortable with that so I guess I would ask if our if our staff if we could just make sure that this version is all I mean you all have it I think everybody has it but if we could just make sure this is published with the with the original version that way it's you know kind of all easy and and we can all digest it county manager and then we'll go to the vice chair.
Thank you um one tha- thing that's really helpful is that uh we'll definitely take a look at uh the competency issue is an interesting one because we're looking at it from a bunch of different perspectives um so you're right there's some that may stay live even if there's already some direction taken on it and so once we get all of your feedback we'll take the time between now and the next meeting to make sure we've done some homework and get some updates because we know this is such a iterative process so thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair.
Um yeah thank you I think these are um helpful again I I do um I mean I just think there's a lot here and that's why it worries me sometimes about um like for the P like I I I love the emphasize the well-being of the child as a primary state and agency concern I just don't know like if that's like if the I think it's important to say those things and I think we like your comment about reunification right reunification started because there were so many times when um men in particular were not um given access to being able to be with their children in pre- previous old times right that um men in particular were um sort of just passed out of the pro- out of the equation um like as if they didn't matter right and so reunification said that no matter what that we wanna make sure that both parents have a right to say and hopefully of course not if they're harming I mean we need folks that can say yes if you're harming a child that's not working but um the unfair advantage to where courts were sort of just sort of blatantly siding with the mom or whatever so reunification has I think meant a lot to the um to our world in the past and maybe there's a new I just don't wanna and and your most your um suggestions don't throw that out or anything I just wanna make sure we understand what we know what we're talking about when we um sort of make these and I guess to my point like I said before the things like that one and maybe um and the workforce under healthcare services I support and I will go to bat for those residents I also just wonder like who's respons- I want a little more information on it because in my head it feels like that's UNM or the hospitals responsibility you know they get our mill levy dollars they're on native land IHS land there's all these reasons and I I want those folks to get paid for retention reasons and because they should get paid for their work and is it the responsibility of the state legislature sort of in the same way where um I I guess I just don't know enough about it to say that I would support that and again I think some of these things really go into like even the multimodal transportation program that makes sense to me because it's if it means more money for roads and infrastructure that we can move as a county um it makes sense for me to have them in our priorities but sometimes some of these so I I'd like to digest these two as well um and thank you for the work they look pretty good and clean otherwise.
County manager.
Thank you um you know one one note I'm taking is just making sure that as we proceed we're really tracking are we advocates are we lea- you know are we leading the effort are we recipients of the resource on the issue of of health healthcare overall the one thing that I have a significant concern about is as an employer um we we struggle to make sure that one we wanna make sure we have health insurance that we can afford the other is we wanna make sure that the panels are still open so that we don't have people waiting months and months even for primary care which is why as a county prior to me getting here you invested in Qualmed to make sure that we had another access point for healthcare which means that we're not only paying for partnerships and insurance but we're paying an additional resource as an employer to make sure our employees have access so in some of these instances I'm not I'm thinking obviously about making sure that everybody um that we're fighting for you know for our Medicare dollars and all of that but it is it is an economic development issue for the state and it is a recruitment and retention issue for us if we cannot provide that benefit so this is a good discussion for us and any other ideas and even between now and the next meeting because what we can outline is when we're wearing our hat as an employer when we're wearing our hat as a provider um and when there's something that just generally you agree with that we wanna add our voice to a chorus that will keep refining but I I do just wanna acknowledge on this one I'm not emotionally attached to the uh to the recommended outcome as I am to making sure that our your voices are heard because you employ you know almost three thousand people and they rely on us and the state's not making it easy for us to maintain enough service providers we've lost two recruits because we could not provide healthcare at the appropriate level for family members two smart people that you would have adored right and I I want us to be competitive so anyway that's thank you for letting me just jump in that's something that's been bothering me a lot.
All right so just to be clear Commissioners I'm not gonna move this as an amendment but we but I will move it or something similar at the at the next commission yeah Vice Chair.
Sorry I'll just take real quick just to say for our consideration like and I um like for example the one that was already on here is not part of your amendment was the tribal education but one hundred percent I support tribal education but I I guess just that question of where we have authority because then does our lobbyists then get this document and say I need to be on top of tribal education and start looking for all the ways in which they could use their time to go lobby for tribal education when I'm sure that the tribes and Albuquerque Federation of Teachers and other entities are doing that work and so I guess that's my question is like is this something that our lobbyists then pick up and say I'm gonna do all these things when maybe it's not really the county's position to do so.
Commissioner Buck?
I'm just trying uh so sorry uh Mr Chair I'm trying to follow where the vice chair is referring.
There's a tribal under education.
Oh under education number six.
Just as an example I support tribal funding for education totally and workforce I just saying is it within our purview and our lobbyists' efforts to go and fight for that when I think there are other entities that know more about what the landscape and the politics of tribal education are um that's all.
Thank you for that uh Mr Chair I think that this is a lot of good work I think that in the past what we've done is say um come back with a in in when we're considering this with uh option A or option B kind of a kind of a scenario and then you can do those side-by-side comparisons because I think this is some really good work that clarified uh a lot of the a lot of the questions I had uh for me to for the actual adoption of the resolution and then um so I I would be in favor of directing staff to do that and then secondarily on the process of um I I actually found it um quite um concern is not the word but I I wasn't sure about the uh the questions that we were asked to rank in the survey and where they came from and this is a good example of that of the tribal funding and tribal education I mean so I I think that the pro- the process still does need refinement um I I was a little befuddled but I missed the working uh session so I know that I was sort of behind the the curve on on that um but how those questions for us to rank in terms of priorities even got on the survey I I wasn't clear uh about and so that's just feedback to you um Madam uh County Manager um for for our process so but I I would be in favor of of putting this as part of the record for a a choice or tweak because I think this is is good it's better.
Okay thank you any further comments or questions on this so this is for introduction uh I'd make a motion to introduce do I have a second?
Second.
Second from the vice chair uh seeing no further discussion all those in favor signal in the affirmative yes?
Yes.
Any opposed passes five zero and Ms Court you've got the next one for uh the twenty-twenty-sixth House Bill Two and legislative priorities for New Mexico counties.
Uh yes sir thank you Commissioner uh Mr Chair and Commissioners um the next item on your agenda is a motion to approve for introduction an administrative resolution supporting the House Bill Two and legislative priorities endorsed by the Board of Directors of New Mexico Counties uh the New Mexico Counties is an advocacy organization and it serves as a voice for all thirty-three New Mexico counties in the state of New Mexico um each year the organization's Board of Directors comprised of one county elected official from each of the thirty-three members plus ex officio members approves the organization's House Bill Two and legislative priorities for the New Mexico Legislature's annual sessions Burnley County's elected official who sits on the Board of Directors is Assessor Damian Lara um the resolution in front of you uh outlines some House Bill Two priorities uh as uh voted on by New Mexico Counties um the the support for expanded funding for the detention reimbursement fund um expanded funding for courthouse funding um continued support of the uh purchase and use of seven hundred megahertz radios the detention firefighter and EMS recruitment and retention fund and RISE funding in in addition to those House Bill Two priorities uh the New Mexico Counties is also. In, in addition to those House Bill Two priorities, uh, the New Mexico Counties is also seeking to advocate for IPRRA improvements and property tax exemption deadlines for veterans, clarifying that language in the statute. Um, part of your packet was staff recommendations on each of the items, uh, we do hope that you found those useful. In summary, our staff supports all of the items on the New Mexico Counties resolution and the document that accompanies your packet gives you some details as to why. In terms of IPRRA improvements, our legal team advises that we would follow the guidelines, no matter what the, the statute says, we're going to follow the IPRRA statute. Our next steps on this resolution is bringing it before you for final approval on October 28th. And then at that point, it would be shared with, your resolution would be shared with New Mexico Counties. And with that, um, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Court, I, I would move, uh, introduction. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca, any discussion? Yes, Vice Chair Barbo.
I, I am worried, I always, I'm worried about New Mexico counties, these mostly look good. This IPRRA improvement, I think because the, uh, let me just make sure, to exempt from disclosing specific information prohibits certain requests used to compromise obstruct critical local government services. So I believe that this, I, I think that this is what they're trying to get to is that this last session, there was an exemption made for reproductive health services from IPRRA that, um, really are a bunch of UNM doctors. Um, were the, the main spokespeople for this because they are, were facing numerous amounts of IPRRA requ, like insurmountable amounts of, um, IPRRA requests. And all it really did was, it didn't, um, exempt them from the IPRRA request on the services, but it deducted their names and, um, where they live and what departments they worked for or whatever because that was getting, and we know under the threat of violence. So I don't know if that's what this is trying to get to under the IPRRA improvement, so I wouldn't be able to support it if, without knowing that, I guess. Um, because if they're, if that's what they're, uh, that's what it sounds like they're trying to say, not to make any changes to IPRRA, and I think we have to keep being willing to, um, be accountable, um, but also, you know, make exceptions on, especially when it means people's public safety, so. People's safety.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, any other comments or discussion on this item? See none, uh, we'll close the floor, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative, yes? Any opposed?
No.
All right, that passes on a three-two vote. Thank you, Ms. Court. Uh, I want to take a quick little pit stop here, uh, with the commission and just entertain. Do, do we want to hear item 12A this evening, so it's getting close to nine o'clock? This is an item that we're going to hear at the Local Government Coordinating Commission on Thursday, which I believe four of the five of us sit on. Um, so I, I'm not going to put my finger on the scale here, but just for, for time management's sake, and this, this are, this, these are our volunteers on the, uh, Behavioral Health Authority Advisory Board that, that would be presenting this and so you know, want to be respectful of their time and, and our time as a commission as well, so we could defer this to a future meeting.
And Mr. Chair, just for clarification on the presenters, I understand that only Dr. Lindstrom will be presenting this item?
Okay.
So the Chair and Vice Chair are not present, I don't believe.
Okay, I saw, I saw her earlier, but, um, so Commissioners, is there anybody that, that wants to do a motion on this or are you okay with that? Vice Chair.
I'm, I'm okay with mo, you're saying motion to defer it?
Right.
Yes, I, I can agree with that, but that, that defer to another meeting.
A future meeting.
Yeah, because I think it's important, we, this, that, LGC, just to be clear, LGCC does not take votes any longer on issues, so we'll hear that there and then hopefully we can hear it again and, and whenever we ever take votes here at the board. I move to defer item 12A to a future commission meeting appropriate.
Second. Any discussion, all right? All those in favor, signal in the affirmative for the deferral? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that's deferred on a five-zero vote. Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, all right, Director Walmsley, we have Emergency Management, Operations Center renovation.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, I have an introduction for a resolution to authorize the county manager to execute a sub grant for $1 million to modernize the county's Emergency Operations Center, or EOC. Uh, the facility serves as our central hub for coordination during emergencies and disasters. Um, anything from wildfires and floods to public health, uh, emergencies. Um, the better equipped and more connected our EOC is, uh, the better we are able to protect our residents. Uh, in recent years, we've seen an increase in disasters, um, and the complexities associated with those. And while our current EOC has served us well, uh, it does lack a lot of the modern technology needed for, for today's operating environment. This project is being, um, I guess, supported through congressionally directed funding through Senator Heinrich's office, um, through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, known as their Emergency Operations Center Grant. We, we were awarded $750,000 in federal funds along with a $250,000 local match for a total of $1 million. And we, again, would like to thank Senator Heinrich for his efforts in securing this funding. Uh, the grant itself, we anticipate to improve primarily our video display system, um, with high-resolution screens, uh, being able to pull in multiple feeds from across the county, including video and data feeds. Uh, upgraded workstations to allow for more efficiency in the space that we currently have. And then, um, interoperability between the different communication systems we have within the county. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Director, any questions or a motion? Yes, Commissioner Baca.
Um, just a quick question, so I understand the $750,000 is, is federal grant money? And the $250,000 is, is coming from where?
That will come from local match and we've worked with accounting and budding budget to secure that funding already.
I'm sorry?
Uh, that will come through, general fund, Commissioner.
Okay, that was my question, general fund money for what kind, general fund?
All right, let me, let, uh, DCM Reagan chime in because I think we're both thinking the same thing here.
Yeah, he's correct, it's general fund. So a lot of times the grants will have a matching portion, so it usually comes out of the general fund, which is where his operating budget is.
So the, the agenda says that there's 250,000 through the State of New Mexico Homeland Security and Emergency Management.
Chair, so the, the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security is the pass-through for this grant, so they are the, the agent for us to work through, so the, the money will come through them, through the Department of Homeland Security with the 250,000 as the, the county match to that through general fund.
Okay, I think it's just the way it's worded is kind of confusing.
It's missing a paren, a closed parentheses, I think, or something.
Uh, Commissioner Baca, was that, was that all, sorry?
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, that, it's general fund money, that's what it is, and so, for the 250, but yeah, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Barbo.
So in the summary of this, I see that, um, and you mentioned inner interoperability. It's a new word for me, but, um, I'm assuming that it means that, you know, how we work together with the county and the Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. So to our point earlier today, I just want to make sure that, and I think I actually mentioned this before, but this doesn't, um, mean that, um, or does this mean that about, in, you know, that kind of sharing of data, interoperability, does that mean that they'll have access to, um, data or people we serve and maybe their immigration status, things like that?
Uh, Chair Leena's Vice Chair, uh, no, it's more about tying the, the county systems together. So we have information that's gathered through our dispatch, information with the Sheriff's Office, and that's putting it into a, a common picture for us. It's not necessarily sharing any of that information with the state or the federal government.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Baca, I would just add there, it really is in line with communications between inter-agencies, so Sheriff's Department able to communicate openly with APD, FIRE with its counterparts or Homeland Security with their counterparts. It's not about data specifically, it's more that ability to be on the same networks, uh, same, uh, radio channels, frequencies or that such, it's, it's vastly different than actual data that would be accumulated and released or kept or maintained, it's more in the actual event of an emergency, the ability to openly communicate with the partners that we need to, to get the job done, if that helps.
That really does help, and I think I'm just a little worried because I heard from some folks that, like, for example, we, the Sheriff's Department has a, um, thing that could read license plates, right? Which I think is so important, I have advocated for it before. But that also that company that was providing those could then get the data and see when somebody's license plate was maybe, and so I guess I'm just want to make sure that interoperability doesn't mean that.
In this stance, it does not, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay, I'll trust you, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve? And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Close the floor, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative, yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes on a five-zero vote. Thank you, Director. All right, Technical Services, the Barcelona reconstruction project for Phase Two B and Three, uh, to budget funding to support construction, Director Brian Lopez to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Madam County Manager, I'm Brian Lopez, Technical Services Director with Burnaleo County Public Works, and today I'm presenting the Barcelona Phases Two B and Three, uh, financial resolution. Uh, for this item, we are requesting the introduction of a financial resolution to authorize the acceptance and appropriation of 1.9 million in transportation project funds. This project is supported by the state's Transportation Project Fund, um, federal grants and county, uh, matching funds. Uh, the estimated construction contract is approximately 12.5 million, um, which is actually shown incorrectly on this slide, these two numbers needed to be flipped. We ha, currently have, um, 6.6 million in, uh, federal grants and now with this, uh, TPF fund, which we're requesting to, um, introduce. And that will leave approximately 5.8 million left that we will continue to seek funding for. Uh, this project extends Barcelona Road from Barcelona Circle to the Adenol Main Canal, uh, located in District Two. Uh, this effort continues our commitment to improve safety, accessibility and stormwater man, management in the South Valley. Uh, project, public interest has remained strong, uh, since the earlier phases and this project responds directly to community priorities uh, for safer, more connected streets, uh, with needed drainage improvements. Project schedule, um, the previous phases of the Barcelona Corridor were completed in 2018 and, and 2022, addressing sections from Sleda Boulevard to Barcelona Circle. Uh, design Phase Two B and Three is expected to, uh, be complete. We're showing summer of 2026, but we're being, uh, a little bit conservative as, um, some of the reviews on this is going to require approval by the DOT and that has kind of been lagging. But we do think that we can expedite this. Um, with fall, with bidding following in the fall of 2026 and then construction would, uh, also start in, in 2026. Uh, if this financial resolution is approved for an introduction, uh, Technical Services will bring back the construction agreement and this financial resolution at the October 28th meeting for approval. Last but not least, here, uh, shown here are the project, uh, area maps and typical cross-sections for both phases, uh, which illustrate planned improvements, including the new pavement reconstruction, drainage systems, bike lanes, signage and ADA compliant sidewalks. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Baca, all right, got a motion, a second? Did you, uh, did you want to comment on this?
You know, I, I, I would like to say that, uh, yeah, I appreciate the effort that's gone into this and also I believe this is, it's hard to keep track sometimes, the public meeting we had was the last week or the week before last, and I, I think, I think both you were there, I don't know, I read you or you were there for sure and, and the engagement with the community about this is, is helpful, very important. And also like to say, I really appreciate, uh, uh, effort by, you know, the Public Works as a whole to put together a nice, um, probably six, seven-page document that gives me the, um, um, information on all the various projects in District Two, which is extremely helpful, um, and I know it's just a defensive mechanism for you guys, so I won't be bugging you as much to ask questions about that, but it's okay, that's all right, it's, it's, I think both, uh, my, Mike and I both have, have committed to literally carrying the documents around with us at all times because it is something we get questioned about all the time, not just at me, but just, you know, at, at restaurants and, you know, I think, you know, Mike told me someplace asked her just the other day, man, I wish I would have had this document with me when somebody was asking about, so that's very helpful. And my suggestion, uh, my last suggestion when I reviewed it is to, is to help, is just define the phases a little bit more. I know the County Manager has expressed interest in, in trying to phase out phases, if that's proper to say. Uh, but, um, but to, um, but sometimes, you know, there's so many projects and, and it's really helpful to, to remember which phase we're talking about, we can say Phase One is completed, but what is Phase One, from what point to what point? And what is Phase Two, maybe it's from this last street to the next street, so just a little bit more definition would be very helpful, but that is a great document and there, as I've said before, that for me, that's my priority without any doubt in terms of, you know, financial, uh, commitment from the county is the drainage projects to the community because it, it really is a health and safety issue for the communities and it's been going on for a long time in terms of the needs, so, yeah, thank you for the work on this and I happily, uh, move to, uh, to, to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion, comments? No? All right, we'll close the floor. Thank you. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative, yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes five zero. All right, uh, behave, uh, we're on to approvals, Behavioral Health Authority Division, we have the, uh, Hope Village Emergency Funding Request. Dr. Lindstrom, and, uh, thank you to our, our partners from Hope Works for, uh, for hanging out late with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of, uh, the commission. My name is Wayne Lindstrom, I'm Deputy County Manager for Behavioral Health. And, um, uh, we're here tonight to, uh, urge your consideration of a motion uh, to authorize an emergency funding request for Hope Village. Um, to give you some beef, beef background. You can tell it's late, brief background. Reminds me of that old Wendy's commercial, where's the beef? Um, in 2018, uh, Hope Works was awarded, uh, $3,987,196 dollars, uh, by Burnaleo County for operating Hope Village, uh, which was funded with, uh, public funding, uh, from diverse stakeholders and I can answer questions about that if you have them later. Uh, the contract term was from November of 2020, uh, until October of 2024. And, um, many of you may have recalled or have toured, uh, toured Hope Village. Um, it provides 42, uh, permanent supportive housing units for individuals who are either homeless or experiencing housing instability, but who also experience behavioral health conditions. Um, so as I think you heard from, uh, some of the public comments earlier this evening, this is a rare resource, um, in New Mexico and certainly is an asset, uh, that we want to do all that we can to maintain. In April of, uh, '24, um, about a month before my arrival, uh, Hope Works informed Burnaleo County that it planned to continue operating without county funding. And requ, and later, uh, requested $300,000 for FY26 uh, to sustain, uh, the operation of Hope Village. Uh, one of the unfortunate things that happened as well is that we had the multi-award solicitation for behavioral health, based on the behavioral health gross receipts tax and Hope Works did not take advantage of that opportunity. The board at Hope Works, um, requested a meeting with me in September of 2024 to talk about some of the challenges they've had around successive leadership change. some of the challenges they've had around successive leadership changes, questionable billing practices perhaps, but anyway, to make a long story short, they were facing financial challenges, and we used $100,000 basically to provide emergency funding while we tried to work through what potential options we might pursue. In June of '25, we received a new funding request of $1,145,811.47, and we reviewed that request. We also expected that, given some of the management turmoil that Hope Works experienced, that we also see an audit for FY '24, and fortunately, one of their board members had worked for an auditing firm, and from what I understand, provided auditing services gratis to Hope Works, and we thought that by December of '24, we would have had an audit, and we waited and didn't receive it until May of this year. And then, given that scenario, we find ourselves well into FY '25, and that's an audit that's still pending. We did have Deputy County Manager Reagan's shop basically do a review of the audit for FY '24 and analyze it for us, so that we had at least some firm footing relative to considering any potential funding going forward. So this motion basically is to authorize the County Manager to approve an emergency procurement and execute the agreement with Hope Works in the amount of $760,000 to cover the operations of Hope Village between now and the end of this fiscal year, and to authorize the County Manager to approve any future amendments in accordance with FAR 2023-77. And so that is the motion before you all for consideration, and I stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. Commissioners, questions or a motion? Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm of approval.
Second. All right, we have a second from Vice Chair Barbo. And any comments or questions?
Do you have a comment, Chair? And thank the leadership of Hope Works for being here. I have taken the opportunity to have a tour of the facility a few months ago, and was just very impressed by what, in fact, I mean, honestly, I couldn't, when I asked how they determine how they vet their clients or their residents, and I heard the answer, and I, I couldn't actually believe it, and so I asked it again like two or three times, and the answer I heard is they take the most needy people. And I, I, when I heard it, I just thought, okay, yeah, but you must have some way to, and I know whoever been incarcerated the longest, had the most, longest period of time on the streets, whoever had the, I mean, it was just, I mean, the willingness to work with the neediest by itself was awe inspiring, and so I don't know what happened, and I understand there was some issue that I think you're being very diplomatic about in terms of previous, you know, leadership of the, of the organization from the director position. But Ms. Schultz, I think, is, has high marks from all, you know, from all sources and perspectives I've heard, and, you know, I, I happily support this, this, this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would just say, you know, thank you to our, to our partners from Hope Works that are here, and I know your, your organization has a long storied history, and, you know, St. Martin's, and y'all have been here a long time doing really good work in our community. I spoke with Dr. Lindstrom earlier today. Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom, for taking my call this morning and helping me think through this. I, I, I do have some concerns that, you know, we, we saw a similar item like this when I first came on the Commission, and, you know, we, we stepped up and helped out, and we were assured at the time that there would be sustainability, and that this would, you know, this was, was it, and, and we would be good from there. You know, my, my recognition here, though, is, as Commissioner Baca said, this is the neediest of the needy, a very, I, I would imagine, I have not toured this, and I probably should. This is, I can only imagine this is a very difficult population to serve, very expensive, difficult equals expensive in this kind of business. So, you know, I can imagine that that's challenging to, to fund that, fund it sustainably, and I know that you all do a lot of other work in, you know, day shelter and other missions as well. So this is incredibly important, and the last thing that we need is to, to, you know, empty this place out and say, well, too bad, we got to close up shop because there's no money for it. That's not an option. And as Commissioner Frank Buck and I often say, we need more permanent supportive housing, not less. We probably need a thousand of these units, judging by my very unqualified perspective, but I think it's pretty close, just driving up and down the streets. There are a lot of people that need a lot of help, and they're not sure that, you know, outpatient treatment, that isn't going to work, and, and they need really long-term or permanent treatment. So we have to support this, and, and I really trust in our, in our two leaders here, along with the leadership that, that stuck it out here with us all night, that we can all work together and, and really find a path where, you know, I know this is going to require public investment, it's, it's a very big problem, but where we're, where we're honest with ourselves, right? I, I don't, I don't necessarily believe that we're never going to see this again, but what is sort of the, what is the yearly allocation that this needs from county, from city, from state, from whoever, to sustain it in the long term, so that we don't have to do emergency things or come back and tell us that this is the last time, I promise, and so I totally support this, though, and appreciate you all being here. Vice Chair Barbo.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate this conversation. I, I too also support it. I think I'm honestly, because it's St. Martin's and Hope Village, like that, the 40-year, 40-plus years makes me feel like we can rely on you, although, and it's understandable that there's been some, you know, hiccups, and that happens to everyone, the best of the folks, and it's hard to keep track of it all, and how do we have enough oversight? But I, I guess I, I just want to make sure that, so I would, yeah, I support this, and I guess if the, in my head, I wonder what the money goes to, because I just think, I think that, that, I just want to make sure that if, one of the things we talk a lot about, we've heard a lot about it, maybe we haven't been able to implement, is how are we supporting, the county supporting that infrastructure part of our social safety net services? So like, what does it mean to be able to, are, are you using all the availability between Medicaid dollars, or there's like housing for people coming out, federal dollars for people coming out of prison for housing, or like all are, all of those? And if not, understandably so, because y'all have been in transition and doing all this stuff, but how can, like, it's like that teach to fish rather than, like, how do we help our nonprofits such as this one to get that backend settled in and strong and stable so that, so that they are using all the opportunities for funding, including the county? So that's it. Just that we said what you said. But I move to support if there hasn't already been a motion.
There was.
Okay, yes.
May I move one?
County Manager.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment, and that is that we are asking you to do something extraordinary because this organization is important, but it has had challenges. And one of my expectations is that this nonprofit in partnership with our staff will make the improvements in the back-of-house environment, and in particular because there's been such a large amount of public money that's already gone into this particular organization. It has new leadership, but our expectations for that leadership are going to be very high, in part because we don't want to be in a situation where, and we get this a lot, where people come to us and say, we missed the multi-year, we are having challenges, we're coming mid, mid-year, and I know that makes you all uncomfortable. It makes me extremely uncomfortable. And so we're bringing this to you for exactly the reason you said, which is, this is a really hard-to-serve population, and they do a really good job at that, and we also need to make sure that we understand the implications of the finances. So we, to be candid with you, more money was requested. We were very disciplined about what we're bringing forward to you, and we're going to work closely with them so that they're both able to apply for dollars, but that we are doing more to, to support and stabilize them. And again, I'm just going to say this, every nonprofit, we have a lot of nonprofits that come to us, and you all know this, because they come to you and then come to us, but we're really trying hard to get everybody aligned. And so one of the things we do have to come back to you with is what is that strategy that really provides the back-of-house strengthening and services, and how are we really clear about our expectations in terms of our partnerships? So you'll see more of that coming, and I, I want this to be an indication of us being able to come back to you with, when, when they're going through the process, that we don't have concerns about surprises, but that we really are in, in partnership with them. So, and, and I, I do just want to say, they were really forthcoming with us, very collaborative. So it's, I, my concern really is more not creating expectations, being really rigorous in our structures, so that we create the same level of expectation for all of our nonprofit partners, and it alleviates frankly, people just kind of coming to you at the last minute, but as importantly, we're able to plan for our budget in terms of what we're going to be spending, especially given that we're making more investments as a county in this area. So I, I just wanted to level set that because, because I know people come to you and say, they're being mean to us, and we're not trying to be, we really are trying to be ruthlessly disciplined with the public dollars, and really holding our partners up to, to high-quality services and strengthening the back-of-house.
Appreciate that, Madam County Manager. Commissioners, any further discussion? All right, close the floor. All those in favor signal the affirmative, yes. Any opposed? That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last item tonight, save the best for last here. The FY '26 to '230 water conservation plan update, and we have Technical Services Director Brian Lopez, Dan McGregor with our Natural Resources Group, and Megan Marcy with the Water Conservation Program.
I just have to stand up first. My back. My legs are moving. That might not be on. Can you all hear me? Okay. My name is Megan Marcy. I am the Water Conservation Program Lead for Burnley County, and I'm here to request the Commission's approval of an update to our water conservation plan, which is going to guide our water conservation program for the next five years. First, just a little bit about our water conservation program. We support Burnley County residents with efficient and responsible use of water. It was created in 2006 when the city of Albuquerque had achieved great success in reducing water use through its water conservation program. Our program extended water conservation resources to the rest of the county, residents who rely on private wells and small water systems for their domestic water supplies. Through our program, we primarily serve 18,000 properties and about 40,000 residents, with two dedicated staff and approximately $200,000 in an annual program budget. It's very unique to have a water conservation program housed within a county government, since most are housed in water utilities, so I think this is something we can be proud of. Today, in combination with the Water Authority and the MRGCD's water conservation programs, we ensure that all Burnley County residents have access to water conservation resources. Our program is governed by a water conservation plan that's updated every five years, and that ensures that our program aligns with best practices in water conservation, and also continues to deliver programming that meets the needs of the public that we serve. So to develop this plan update, we did work with a consultant, Maddos Water Management, that specializes in water conservation, and we took several things into consideration as we developed this plan. First thing is that we looked at the current, well, we looked at the water conservation-related policies in the Albuquerque-Burnley County Comprehensive Plan, and we adopted those policies as our goals. We also analyzed current available water use data for our customers. We evaluated the effectiveness of our existing program. Through our consultant, we did a broad survey of over 150 initiatives at other water conservation programs in the U.S., which gave us an opportunity to bring relevant new programming back to the county. And then, most importantly, we solicited input from our public, and that is the primary driver for our program. We did this by conducting three open houses in the areas where our customers are concentrated, and those are the Sandia Heights-North Albuquerque Acres area, the East Mountains, and the South Valley. We also conducted an online community survey, and through these two modes of outreach, we collected input from 179 community participants. We also conducted an online survey for the water systems in our service area. We had meetings with our partners, including the Water Authority, the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, Ciudad Soil and Water Conservation District, and several nonprofits. These partners are very important to extend the reach of our small program. And then finally, we circulated the draft plan for public comment, and we integrated the comments that we received from the public and from commissioners into our plan. So just a brief overview of what's, what's presented in this plan. We are going to continue to operate under our five core components. Those are illustrated on this slide. They've existed since the program's inception. Under these five core components, we're going to continue 18 existing program initiatives, and we're going to introduce seven new program initiatives. So the new initiatives are extending our education and outreach to include community conversations targeting households that are connected to a water system but have a private well for outdoor use, developing a new leak repair assistance and water conservation retrofit program for low and limited income households, introducing new plant kit and tree irrigation kit incentives to promote efficient outdoor water use while also supporting trees and climate resilient landscaping. We're looking to update our water conservation ordinance, which was last substantively updated in 2010, to reflect current best practices in water conservation and align with codes in other Western communities. We are also wanting to strengthen our partnerships with water systems, starting with the largest water utilities in our service area. And finally, we want to increase marketing to boost participation in our program and reach a broader and more diverse audience, including underserved communities. And we estimate that these initiatives will save approximately 30 million gallons of water annually. So I wanted to speak now just to the version of the plan that's before you tonight. We had originally provided the plan to the Commission on June 24th, and the Commission deferred the plan for consideration of additional public comment that we had received in advance at that meeting. In the interim, we received additional public and commissioner comments on the plan, and the plan in your agenda packet was revised to address these comments. So on this slide, I've included the major changes that we made to the plan, and I'll just go through those really quickly. We moved the ordinance update up in our plan, in our five-year planning cycle, and we added key subject areas that the ordinance, ordinance update will address. We added ideas for expanded programming if additional funding is available. We added the estimated water savings for our next five years of programming. We also added a commitment to improve the estimates of water use and savings that we calculate for people who participate in our program. We committed to tracking annual water use and gallons per capita per day for water systems in our service area and using that to inform our work with water systems. As previously mentioned, we committed to community conversations that address auxiliary well water use. We also committed to prioritizing communities with high water use in our new marketing and outreach strategy that I spoke about previously. And then finally, we committed to continue participating in regional water planning for the Middle Rio Grande. So in conclusion, I'd just like to highlight some final key points about this plan. The Commission is aware that New Mexico is facing an at least 25% decline in its water supply over the next 50 years, and water conservation is an essential strategy for balancing our water use with available supply. It also has It also has many co-benefits, some of which are illustrated in the graphic on this slide. This plan update prioritizes both water savings and equitable access to water conservation resources. It contributes directly to the implementation of the Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Comprehensive Plan, and per management direction, we can implement this plan with no increase in budget or staffing. So with that, we respectfully request the commission's approval of the fiscal year '26 through '30 Water Conservation Plan Update, and with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Megan. I would move approval.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca, and open up the floor for any discussion. Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Megan and Mr. McGregor, Mr. Lopez, County Manager, I just wanted to thank you all for listening and following through on some of these commitments that were, I think an asterisk should be on that number seven, that you listened to the public and the commissioners because we were a big pain in your side during this process, but I think that it resulted in a very good and improved document. So I really do want to thank you, and I'm particularly happy that you included in there those community conversations because really, water conservation, as we've seen with the Water Utility Authority, Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Water Utility Authority, was through education and conversation and re-talking and re-talking and re-talking with our community that zero escape is a good thing. It's not zero escape, it's zero escape. It's beautiful. It has resulted in water savings, but that's been through these conversations with the community who never thought that they could do without their little plot of turf in their front yard and a grid development. And it's worked, but it took 20 years. So I do think that this commitment for this conversation, and I'm committed to working with you on that, particularly in my district, in the sort of mosaic of city-county Los Rancho's in the North Valley, I think is a really important place for us to reach out. I've already reached out to the mayor of Los Rancho's, talking to him about helping us with those community conversations. So thank you again. I think it's a very good document, and I will support it tonight.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the explanation. I really appreciate hearing this. It hurts my heart to think of the '25, and I'm thankful that I got to grow up with the folks that say we should be thinking about seven generations ahead of what we're planning for, and ah, that 25% decline doesn't feel like we're thinking about seven generations ahead. So, but thank you for this, for doing all we can, for doing as much as we can here, and definitely just appreciate the work put into it and the thoughtful, I super really appreciate that you all worked with the comprehensive plan because I think there's so much, we've got to keep building on the work that's already been done. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Frank Buck?
Thank you. Just briefly, so, yeah, I also impressed with the work, the original plan and, you know, the commandments, I wasn't too involved in, but, so, yeah, it's a great document, and it's an issue that's brought to my attention more so the last, you know, eight months than probably ever before in my life, and so I appreciate that from Adias and others who have made this, impressed upon me, the importance of this issue. But I am still a little bit confused, not with your work, but just overall our policies within the community and the state in regards to our plans for growth and development and different types of businesses, especially biz businesses that are high water users, and the idea of the need for conservation and how we integrate that and have those communications and those discussions with, you know, on these projects. I'm also very interested in learning about and understanding the new technologies that are in place, and I know the governor has, I think, committed $50 million to, if I'm not mistaken, to studying of brackish water, which is a huge resource throughout the country and in New Mexico, and also what I read about produced water technology, new technology. And so I think to combine all of those together is really important because otherwise, there's an impression that people have in the community that it's all in the backs of our residential users to conserve, 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 where there's other very big users of water, and they need to have these, you know, these conversations. And then it's always going to come back to technology, the new technology that is out there, and understanding it's not just conserving, it's being smart about it, and so to integrate all those together in discussion, I think is really, really important. So, yeah, I think you're right when you said, you know, I don't know your other employee, but two dedicated employees and your staff do obviously good work there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to reiterate especially what my colleague, Commissioner Barbara Baca, said about, thank you for working with us. I know that we're a pain in the butt sometimes, but, you know, really did enjoy working with you and reading through this and kind of understanding, you know, where you've been and where you envision going, and thank you for incorporating some of our priorities into that. Again, very excited about the domestic well conversations, right? Doing this in a way that is collaborative with property owners rather than punitive, right? Taking that approach, at least initially, and, you know, see where it goes. But I think that that's a very responsible and a good way for us to go, so thank you for incorporating that. And I just wanted to say, you know, that this staff is an area where we could invest a very little amount of money, I think, and see a lot of gain in the staff and this department in general because the value of water in our community is only increasing with that 25, I think that 25% number is on the low end for New Mexico, for our region, and we are probably a year or two from compact compliance red line, which will decimate that figure even more from the sense of what we're obligated to provide to Texas. So money, resources, time, effort that we invest in this area, I think, is an economic development issue. It's a cultural issue, it's a quality of life issue, even though it's not top of mind for most people when they turn on their tap, if it's working, water's good, right? But we know that this could be a huge issue. When it's a crisis, this is going to be a huge crisis. And so thankful for you all, Megan, Dan, and everyone else that's working on this, and I'm excited to partner with you. I know that the county management team has directed, you know, no new money in this plan, but I'm excited to keep advocating for you as we go into budget for where we can make strategic investments and putting my own money where my mouth is, and I'm going to partner with you all to put some of my DDF into your department to pilot some of these technology initiatives. There's some really cool things that you all introduced to me about agricultural water use efficiency, right? Doesn't mean that we have to lose the green belt, but how can we have the green belt use less water and use water more efficiently? And so I'm excited to work with you on that, so thank you for humoring me and look forward to having further conversations with you about that. So, thank you. With that, I'll close the floor. If there's nothing else for approval, all those in favor, signal the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes on a 5-year vote. Thank you for your work. Really appreciate it. All right, our next commission meeting will be held Tuesday, October 28, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. right here in the Kent Sanchez Commission Chambers. With that, if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.